I'd like to call the July 9, 2015 meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton.
Here.
Ms. Palmer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Freyland.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
First order of business today is council minutes, minutes from the meetings of June 8 and June 11, 2015, and the special meetings of June 2, June 3, June 4, June 10, and June 30, 2015. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't realize we had this much fun last night. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that you approve the council minutes for June 8, June 11, 2015, and the council's special meeting minutes of June 2, June 3, June 4, June 10, and June 30, 2015.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freyland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster. Next order of business or matters of special privilege, and today we are pleased to have two. First is a resolution honoring Parks and Recreation Director Laurie Ryerson, and the second is an excellence in service to Williamsburg presented to Waller Mill Park Manager Michael Van Aldenhoven. So Laurie, first, if you would meet me at the podium. As many of you know, Laurie is retiring at the end of this month after a long service to the city of Williamsburg, and we have a resolution of commendation and appreciation for her today. And this is, again, a resolution of commendation and appreciation, Parks and Recreation Director Laurie C. Ryerson, on the occasion of her retirement. Whereas after a long and distinguished career, Laurie C. Ryerson will retire July 30, 2015, having effectively and honorably served the city of Williamsburg for 34 years, serving as a program director in 1981, deputy director in 2002, and as department director since 2009. And whereas during her tenure with the city, numerous parks and recreation projects and initiatives were completed, including the expansion of Quarter Path Recreation Center, the opening of the regional dog park and disc golf course at Waller Mill Park, the creation of Redout Park, and the development of Great City Walks Guide and mobile application. And whereas Laurie has diligently worked to create and organize a city emergency shelter, a Quarter Path Recreation Center, and has served as the shelter manager during emergency activations, and whereas Laurie has served on numerous city committees and boards, including chairing the safety committee, serving as treasurer for the Williamsburg Farmer Market, and actively participating in the health and wellness task force. And whereas Laurie received a Bachelor of Science in Recreation Administration from Radford University, and attended the Welland Cooper Centers, the leading education and development program lead at the University of Virginia in 2004, and whereas her professionalism, kindness, and commitment to public service have earned Laurie the utmost respect of citizens and colleagues, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Williamsburg, on behalf of all the citizens of Williamsburg, does hereby express its sincere gratitude for Laurie Ryerson's many years of service and leadership to the city. We congratulate her upon her retirement and wish her many years of good health and happiness. And this is dated July 9, 2015, and signed by all members of city council and city manager Jody Miller. Laurie, congratulations.
Well, after 34 years, there's a lot of people I could thank, but I think Jerry might have this red light flashing on the timer, so I'm just gonna say it's been a privilege to serve the city. And my staff is all here. I'd like to ask them to stand up because they're the ones, they make my job easy. Thank you all.
Again, Laurie, thank you and thank all your staff for all you do for us. You create just one of the premier park and recreation programs in the region, so thank you very much. And Laurie, we're gonna miss you. Next is an excellence in service to Williamsburg award, and this is for Michael Van Aldenhoven. I just mispronounced your name, but Michael, you'll forgive me. I'm gonna read this and then give you a chance to see it. This city of Williamsburg takes pleasure in recognizing Michael Van Aldenhoven for excellence in service to Williamsburg. Michael Van Aldenhoven has served the citizens of Williamsburg for seven years with great enthusiasm and energy, first as a boathouse attendant at Waller Mill Park, and currently as the Waller Mill Park Manager for Parks and Recreation Department. He is a daily ambassador for the park and has been instrumental in the development of new park amenities such as an 18-hole disc golf course, the Giving Garden, which provides fresh produce to Avalon, a local center for women and children, an agility set for the Waller Mill Regional Dog Park. Michael's dedication to improving Waller Mill Park through special events and community outreach efforts has increased park attendance, revenue, and overall enjoyment of the park. Michael has provided leadership and vision in the revitalization of Waller Mill Park, serving on a city team that presented a case study about the park at the National Transforming Local Government Conference hosted by the Alliance for Innovation. Michael's work ethic, creativity, and commitment to public service are evident to all those who work with him and visit the park. He has created a greater sense of community among park staff and volunteers, making Waller Mill Park a wonderful place to work and visit. Michael is hereby recognized for his commitment to excellence in keeping with best traditions of public service in the city of Williamsburg. This is dated today, July 9, 2015, and signed by me and Jody Miller, city manager. Michael?
I really appreciate all the opportunities that I've had with the city of Williamsburg and a chance to help make this community that I grew up in, went to school in, went to college in, a better place. I really appreciate the work of my staff. They are not here, but the work that I do out of Waller Mill couldn't be done without them and with the support that I receive from the rest of the department and Parks and Rec and the rest of the city, so thank you, everybody.
Something for you all. Thank you, Laurie.
Thank you very much.
The next order of business is public hearings, and they we have two. The first is PCR 15-012, Williamsburg Montessori School Special Use Permit Request at 800 Richmond Road and 104 Brook Street. Ms. Murphy.
Mayor Holman and members of council. The Williamsburg Montessori School is proposing to operate an upper elementary and middle school at 800 Richmond Road and 104 Brook Street, which requires a special use permit in the LB2 district and the RS2 single-family dwelling district. The school currently has two satellite campuses in the city, one at 420 Scotland Street and one at 201 Peniman Road, that will be closed and combined into one campus at this site if the special use permit is granted. The 2013 comp plan designates this parcel as mixed-use land use and low-density single-family detached residential. Lands to the north and east are designated mixed land use, with areas to the south and west designated as low-density single-family detached residential. This property is zone limited business neighborhood district LB2 and single-family dwelling district RS2, and you can see that on this slide. And lands to the north and east are zone LB2, and lands to the south and west are zone RS2. And this is the approximate split of where the LB2 district is and the RS2 district is for the two parcels. The applicant proposes to use the building as a school with the area behind the building used for gardening and a relocation of three picnic tables and benches from the current school on Scotland Street to this location. No playground equipment is proposed at this location. The applicant notes that students get their fitness from walking and jogging and other off-site opportunities. The question to be considered with this request is whether or not a special use permit for a school is appropriate use in the LB2 and the RS2 districts at this location. The land use goal for this area states in the comp plan is to provide a degree of flexibility in land uses to be developed in areas suitable for a mixture of residential and commercial uses. While this facility will not directly generate tax revenue for the city, at this location, schoolchildren will add to the richness of the social fabric of the arts district. Additionally, two current business zone properties now used by the school will be available for business use. As I stated before, allowing a school at this location is not a clear-cut issue. The property has been on and off the market for the last three years, either for sale or for lease, with no takers except for the school with their current request to lease the property for the next three years. The neighbor at the rear of the property, this neighbor, on Brook Street supports the request if a privacy fence is constructed along the property line. This is the privacy fence they are requesting between the two properties. The school agrees with this request and would like to construct a picket fence from this corner of the building across Brook Street, a privacy fence six foot here and along the motel property, with the picket fence to connect to the corner of the building at that spot. Letters of support were included in your packet, and one public comment supporting the applicant has been posted on the city's website. Traffic is an issue that needs consideration, and staff was concerned with the Brook Street being used for drop-off and pickup. A new driveway connection with Brook Street is not allowed because of the closeness to Richmond Road. At one thought, they thought you could come through here, but that's too close to Richmond Road to allow that driveway expansion. Since creation of the drop-off loop is not possible, the school proposes to stagger the start and end times for pickup and drop-off for the two programs with a 20-minute delay, utilizing the existing parking lot layout that contains 21 parking spaces. The original request submitted by the applicant was to serve 50 students. The applicant submitted a revised letter to increase the number of students from 50 to 75 to 80 before the planning commission meeting. Under the original request, the plan was, as noted, is to stagger the drop-off time and end times to manage traffic along with a shuttle bus that transports about 50 students, 15 students. With 21 parking spaces and staff taking up five or six of these spaces, approximately 15 spaces are available for drop-off and pickup each day. The applicant notes that above 70 students, they would need to add a third pickup and drop-off time, but noted they did not anticipate growing to 75 to 80 students in the next three years. Planning Commission held a public hearing on June 17. The applicant and two individuals spoke at the public hearing. The commission recommended by a vote of 5-0 that a special use permit be approved to locate a satellite campus for the Williamsburg Montessori School at 800 Richmond Road and 104 Brook Street contingent upon the five conditions as noted in my memorandum. Since the commission meeting, staff tried to define more specifically the requirements of a transportation plan and recommends approval of the special use permit as recommended by planning commission, allowing staff approval of an expansion of up to 70 students following the 2015-16 academic school year, provided that there are no demonstrated issues associated with student drop-off and pickup, including traffic backups on Richmond Road, drop-off and pickup on Brook Street, and traffic accidents associated with the drop-off and pickup. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Applicants are also here if you have any questions then.
Right. Thank you, Carolyn. Let me come back to council for any questions.
I have one question. Ms. Murphy, on the fourth condition, the grassy area behind the building located in the RS2 district shall be used only for gardening and picnic uses?
Yeah.
It's just, that's pretty specific in a way that also makes it somewhat ambiguous because it makes it sound as though you can't just be out in the yard, you have to be having a picnic, or you have to be out there gardening. You can't just convene a class outside to talk to students, or students can't just gather out there on their own. Is that the intention, or is it to limit playground activities?
To limit the playground activities, not to be able to put playground equipment in there, not to be able to park cars back there, not to be able to have a full extension of the school, but to be use it for like recreational type uses, for them to have gardening and be able to go back there and eat their lunches and those kind of things. It's not intended to not let the kids go back there and have a demonstration on some type of school activity.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Carolyn.
This is inside. I'm gonna be participating in this discussion as the applicant is a client of my authority.
Thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to address the special use permit, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Dave Swetnam-Burland. My address is 102 Little John Road in Williamsburg, York County. I'm the current board of directors chair for the school, and I just wanted to mention a couple of additional items. First, to thank Ms. Murphy and staff in the planning commission for being so easy to work with on this. I have experience in my other life as an attorney with working with municipalities, and this has been one of the most pleasant that I've ever had. I want to thank the members of the board and administrative staff, Sandy Andrews, our head of school, and Laura Haskins, assistant head of school, for coming today. I also just wanted to mention briefly that we have a great parent community, among them Stephanie Weber, who's a leading expert on transportation issues, and she'll be working with a committee of us to address the parking and traffic issues, which were the main area of concern expressed at the planning commission. I'm happy to answer any questions from the council as well.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? None. I'll come back to council for a discussion and action. Ms. Freyland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's an interesting question, and I think of it in light of a fairly recent conversation we had, where there was concern about the amount of commercial property in the city and the need to maintain that, and how we have so little of it, and we had a lot of debate about that. But in this case, what I'm seeing is we have two different zoning designations on two parcels that are used together. We have it in an area that abuts a residential district. It's also next to a commercial corridor. But as we think about RS2 and our desire to have it bring a level of vitality that's not too intense, so that it's compatible with surrounding residential neighborhoods, it's hard to think what would be a better fit than a school. It's going to bring in regular traffic in the morning, regular traffic in the afternoon, and possibly regular traffic in the evening if they do programs at the school. And that traffic usually involves parents and children who may, at the same time, want to spend money. And one of the things we've looked at is how do we create a little more energy on some of the corridors? And we do that in a lot of different ways. One of them is by diversification. We don't want all retail, we don't want all restaurants, we don't want necessarily, for some areas, appropriate for all residential. But if we can mix those up, as we try to do in an RS2 zoning district, it just makes a lot of sense. What really compels me here, though, is that this building, as fine a building as it is, folks did a wonderful job building it, its layout is not conducive to too many of the normal uses we would expect in this area. And so to have a use that fits so nicely with the structure of a building that would be remarkably unfortunate and expensive to demolish and rebuild on the site, why not allow this use, which seems to serve all purposes well, and add something to the community? And I think John Littley, you know, talked about it in his message, he was the one that emailed we received. Education is economic development, and the opportunities with a school like this, close to the college, close to the historic area, on the edge of the arts district, seems to me to have a lot of benefit.
Thanks.
And I would agree. I think this parcel is very unique in lots of ways, but just it's where the parcel is in relations to other commercial, more intensive commercial versus being next to residential. I think lends itself to this type of low-intense, you know, family residential atmosphere, but almost in a commercial kind of way, and I think that's what the school brings. You know, I think Vice Mayor Freyland's correct, you know, it does dovetail into the conversation that we've had for the last several months about eroding the commercial property, but I think what we have here is probably one of the highest and best uses for this parcel, given the economic conditions of Williamsburg and Richmond Road. You know, if traffic were higher, maybe it could be a restaurant, you know, maybe it could be something else, but I don't think that that's the case. And frankly, I don't think a restaurant there would be a good fit next to the, that close to the residential area. You know, we kind of consider that LB2 district a buffer, so to speak, between, you know, the more intensive commercial and the residential, so I think the school is absolutely fitting there.
I agree with everything that's been said. I do have one question I should have asked Ms. Murphy before. Did either the furniture store or the gas station that was there before park behind the building?
I think the gas station at some time in the past used it temporarily. It wasn't like a place where you, the customers used so much. I think their employees and those types of people used the back at one time to park back there.
So that would have been much more intrusive on the house, on the neighbors, than this would be.
And I think that's why the neighbor also thinks that a fence along there and the kids there that would sort of protect them from seeing it from their front doors, they think the use is appropriate.
But the resident that lived there also ran the garage.
That's right. Yeah, that's true.
But, no, I think this is a very good use for the site.
Yeah, and I agree also, and I think that the compatibility and positive impact that they've had in the downtown location gives me confidence that this will work really well here, too. So I want to congratulate the, or thank the board and the school for putting together such a complete application, and I know Carolyn works hard with people to make it work, so you make it easy for us, so thank you very much. Any other comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the approval of special use permit as recommended by planning commission, allowing staff approval of an expansion of up to 70 students following the 2015-16 academic school year, provided that there are no demonstrated issues associated with student drop-off and pickup, including traffic backups on Richmond Road, drop-off and pickup on Brook Street, and traffic accidents associated with drop-offs and pickups.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freyland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
abstain.
Again, thank you all very much, and we look forward to working with you going into the future.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is the Virginia Enterprise Zone Application, and this is proposed Resolution 15-09.
As Rich Saunders will be presenting, Mr. Mayor.
Rich, welcome.
Do you have the PowerPoint ready?
You just advanced the slide.
Okay. Sorry, this is my first time up here, so getting used to it. There we go, okay. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, thanks for having me here to speak to you today on our third year in a row applying for the enterprise zone designation. So the Economic Development Office requests your support in our application for enterprise zone. The city is planning to apply for the enterprise zone designation again this year in two key sectors or sections of the city. This year, we're applying jointly with James City County. You may have remembered, last year, we applied individually, and two years ago, we applied jointly with both York County and James City County. We feel it's important to continue to apply, as it's no cost to us to apply, and if we do get a designation, it could be an important marketing tool for us in two of these key areas of the city where we're looking to really bring new investment in. And it's something that site selectors often look for in sort of a pot of incentives that a jurisdiction offers, so we're really lucky it could help strengthen us from a marketing Just to go over a little bit about the program. The enterprise zone program is a partnership between both the state and local government to attract and expand businesses and private commercial development in distressed areas within jurisdictions. There are two types of incentives that the state provides if we were to be given this designation. The first one is the Real Property Investment Grant, which is grant of up to $200,000 per qualified building or facility. The business must invest $100,000 in rehab or expansion, or $500,000 in a new construction project qualified for this grant. This has been the most utilized in the program so far from the state. In 2013, the state issued over $11 million in grants, and James City's done a tremendous job with their existing enterprise zone and using this one to their advantage. The second type is the Job Creation Grant. The state grants up to $800 per qualified position each year for five years with this grant program. So a qualified position is any full-time, permanent job whose wage is at least 175% of the federal minimum wage of 7.25 an hour, so that would come out to 12.69 an hour. And so far, in 2013, just under $3 million in grants was issued with this program. So this is just a map to give you an idea of where the existing enterprise zones are located. It shows both those prior to 2005 and after 2005. In 2005, the Enterprise Zone Grant Act established up to 30 zones, which had previously been 57, so it's made the application process a little bit more competitive than what it was before. Another change in 2005 was that instead of looking at individual census tracts for distress in communities, it looked at the entire jurisdiction. So in some cases, for, and particularly for us, that's made it a little bit more competitive and difficult to sort of have a higher distress score when you're looking jurisdiction-wise as opposed to the most distressed census tract. So of the 30 zones that were allowed from the 2005 Act, 26 have already been designated, so this year, they're going to be filling those four remaining spots. So we are working with James City on trying to get one of those last spots. So again, last year, we applied individually. This year, we have decided to apply jointly with James City County. They have an existing enterprise zone that's expiring at the end of the year, so they're really looking to continue to utilize that marketing strategy for their jurisdiction. One of the reasons we have decided to apply jointly was that we get 50 extra points added to our application score for having a joint application. The application total score is worth 1,500 points. Half of that comes from the narrative that we write, which is based on how we can describe we'll utilize the enterprise zone and the types of incentives that we will offer for being an enterprise zone. The other 750 points come from that predetermined distress score, which asks me what all that includes. It includes unemployment rate, median household income, and percentage of public school students that are receiving free or reduced lunch. Last year, which, you know, we didn't get the designation, we did have one of the highest narrative scores, is what the DHCB had said, so this year, we're hoping to build on that even more and have a stronger application. We have an intern in the audience who's working with us and putting together that application, and she's been a tremendous help. So of that 750, 750 being the most distressed, the average for James City County, Williamsburg, comes to 193. Williamsburg's being 324, and James City's being 62. Just to give you a little bit more perspective, the most distressed municipality in the state is Martinsville, which has a distress score of 750. Newport News, which currently has three existing enterprise zones, has a distress score of 433, and Hampton has a distress score of 444. 15 of the pre-2005 zones are expiring this year, which includes James City County, so we do expect many of those 15 will probably be reapplying this year for a new designation, so again, that makes it, continues to make it pretty competitive. So the actual physical area of the zones, each jurisdiction is allowed to have up to three non-contiguous areas to constitute a single zone with a cap of 640 total acres. Since we're applying jointly with James City County, we have to share one common contiguous area, which we will be sharing along the Route 60 corridor in the southeast section of the city. of the city. So the two zones, we're continuing to keep the same that we proposed in the last two years, which is Midtown. So that includes both the area of the Williamsburg Shopping Center and the Arts District, and the Northeast Triangle Capitol Corridor, which is the area that we'll share with James City County down along the Route 60 Pocahontas Trail Corridor. James City is proposing to keep a large amount of what their existing enterprise zones are, which is the southeast area of the county and the Tohono area up in the northwest part of the county. They're also proposing to add an additional enterprise zone area in the area around the Williamsburg Crossing Shopping Center. So that's just a map that shows the first area, the Northeast Triangle, you guys are all very familiar with. And then that green that you see on the map is the specific area that we would be using as an enterprise zone for that area, which you can see, it's the commercially zone land in the Northeast Triangle along Capitol Landing Road, and then down along Second Street and York Street down in the southeast part of the city. And then you have Midtown, which again includes the Williamsburg Shopping Center and the Arts District. So again, the state requires that we, we as a municipality, also include incentives in addition to the state's incentives. So we're working together on this. So we are coordinating with James City to offer some of the same incentives that they are. So we've added a few this year that we didn't, we had not proposed last year. But the big key here is that we're not proposing to lose any of our existing tax revenue. The grants that we would offer will be based on new tax revenue that will be generated as a result of receiving the designation and getting investment in these parts of the city. So that's a key thing to consider. So the first one is the real property tax incentive. There's a minimum investment here, $500,000. And then the grant would be a declining grant based on the new property tax that's generated as a result of the investment. And then the machinery and tools tax, this is one we added this year. The same requirement that we would require that the business invest at least $500,000 in improvements. And the incentive would be equal to a portion of the new machinery and tools tax that's generated. Again, it'd be a five-year declining incentive. The third one is the B-Pole Tax Incentive, or also known as the Business License Tax Incentive. And in order to be considered for this, the business firm would be would have to be licensed with our Commissioner of Revenues office as a professional firm, which is defined by the Commissioner of Revenue. So those are typically attorneys, office-type jobs, higher-level skilled positions. The incentive would be equal to a portion of the new B-Pole Tax Revenue. They would be required to have at least $500,000 in gross receipts over a two-year period, and would be reimbursed 50% of additional B-Pole Tax over two years. And then business personal property tax is similar. In this case, the business firm must invest at least $50,000 in business personal property tax. Again, they'd have to be licensed as a professional firm, and the incentive would be equal to a portion of the new personal property tax revenue, and they'd be reimbursed 50% over a two-year Other incentives, we would be offering improvement fee waivers. So they would get fee waiver for site plan review fees, subdivision fees, LDAs, zoning applications, building permits. The EDA would also provide an enhanced sign grant. So currently, we only offer the sign grant program to non-conforming signs for them to be replaced. In this case, we would offer it to any new sign in the Arts. This would be specific to the Midtown area. And then also enhanced e-commerce grants, so additional funding would be available for that. And we'd have an enhanced demolition loan program also available in the Midtown Zone. And then again, this would be something we would use to help businesses market themselves or help the community market ourselves as we get that designation. And so where the timeline is quickly approaching, the applications are due August 1, 2015. Again, we're required to have your support in applying for this application. The zones are typically designated by January 1. So it goes on the calendar year for designation. I didn't say this before, but it's a total of 20 years. It's 10 years for the designation with two five-year renewals that are non-competitive. So it's up to 20 years. So again, if it's designated today, then City Council would in the future adopt an ordinance to specify the specific incentives. And then the Economic Development Office and the Economic Development Authority would be the ones to administer the program. So that's all. Guys, have any questions?
Thank you, Rich. Let me come back to council to see if there are any questions.
If I could, just as a reminder, last month, I made the same disclosure, but I do own property in the in this proposed economic incentive district. But that shouldn't impair my ability to make an unbiased decision.
Any questions?
I do have a few questions, if I may. Mr. Saunders, you mentioned that there are 15 enterprise zones that are coming to an end of a term, and that you expect all of those to be reapplying?
I don't, I have no idea which ones are reapplying, but I would just guess that some of them may be applying again.
And those 15 slots, are they separate from the four that are to be filled? Or in other words, are there 19 altogether, or are there just four that everybody's going to be applying for?
There's four that everyone's applying for. Anyone that was designated prior to 2005 does not count towards that 30 that was established in the Legislative Act in 2005. So it's a totally new.
So do we know, will James City County be reapplying for their current enterprise zone designation?
No, they're applying with us. They have to apply again separately. So they're in this application with us, they're including much of the same area that was that's going to be expiring at the end of the year.
So their other zone will then expire?
At the end of the year.
Yeah, correct. Do you have any idea, maybe Whit can help. On average, do we have any idea how many applications come up for these few precious spots?
It's, I'll help Rich out. So and as y'all know, when I worked at the state, I actually managed this program. It's always been more than three times people apply and slots are available, even when we had 57 zones, even when the state had 57 zones. So our odds are probably 30% or so. We're hoping, joining with James City County, and Kate Sykes is here representing them as a cheerleader for us today, we hope that they've used their zone so effectively that we hope the fact that their zone is ending, that the state will look favorably on letting them keep a zone by giving them a new one jointly with us. So y'all have noticed, each year, we've had slightly different strategy based on what the state staff have told us. This is our last swing. We hope it's not three strikes you're out. So we, this is our last chance for a while.
Just a couple more. So chime in, either one of you. We have a lower distress score this year than we did last year when we went on our own. We have a bonus that we get for applying jointly, but the bonus is not enough to make up for the difference in the distress score. So do we expect that our narrative is going to be so much better that we'll be able to more than make up for that difference and end up with a higher overall score, or are we just giving it a shot and thinking that we might, because James City County had one, we might have a better chance here?
Both of those are true. So certainly, our narrative needs to be as strong as it as close to 750 as possible to even be in the running. We're pretty confident about that part. And we're hoping that James City's past utilization of their zone will push the state to recommend us in that direction. But it's, it's all a gamble.
Yeah. If only you had given us a zone when you were working in.
Exactly.
Could you talk a little bit about how our, it doesn't appear that our incentives are identical between the different areas that we're talking about within the city. So how do, because there's the Midtown has a special demolition bonus incentive. How do our incentives compare to those of James City County? Are we similar, or do we just have different needs and different needs of our clients or customers?
Most of the grants that we're offering for tax, for the increased tax revenue is based off what they're offering.
Okay.
But in the past application, we should be decided to roll forward with this application. We're continuing to try to offer a few incentives specifically within the Midtown area.
And one other question. You talked about fee waivers for subdivisions. Are we talking about residential subdivisions? Are we talking about subdividing commercial?
No. I think just in general, most of the fees that we charge for construction-related projects would be waivers. That would be one of those fees. I don't foresee that likely being one that we would have come up, but it's a possibility. There was a commercial subdivision.
Okay. Thank you.
Scott? First, just more of a comment. When you look at the map, and just to the casual observer, there's no enterprise zones outside of the greater northern Virginia region, with the exception of Winchester, I suppose. And then when you look at the rest of these names that are listed there, Williamsburg is generally known as being considerably better off. It's when you really get down to that specific area that matters. So from the pedestrian level, our names don't compare to Pennsylvania County or Blackstone. But as a question, do you think our fiscal stress score being, let's call it strong, because it mean our fiscal stress score being too low, is that our limiting factor?
That's definitely our biggest limiting factor by far, yeah. We've had pretty strong narratives the last two years that we've applied. So again, we're hoping that James City's utilization will help prove that we can really use that to help spurs investment in parts of the city that really need it.
Gotcha. That's kind of puts us in a tough position. We're like, well, we'd like to get that score up, but it's actually, we really don't.
Yeah, it's ironic. But you know, like I said, site selectors oftentimes, like when you pull up a map there, and if you're looking for commercial property in a lot of the big websites, one of the things you can search for is enterprise zones. It's just one of those initial things that site selectors look for. So it'd be a huge asset to have. It may not seem like a big deal, but just to see that we have that offering, sometimes that can be a yes or no, as to whether someone looks at us.
I also really like the idea of this contiguous 60 corridor, because to the passerby or visitor, no one knows where those jurisdictional boundaries are, and it's one contiguous zone that does need additional attention.
If I could just.
Yeah, please.
I apologize, but I do want to say to Rich's point, that this is such an important marketing tool. And some site selectors will see that you don't have a zone, and you are just scratched off the list, no matter what product you're offering. So I can share with you, in my role as President of the Virginia Economic Developers Association, Secretary Maurice Jones has promised me a seat at the table this summer as they look to revise this program. And I think there's better ways to do it to help all communities, because every community has some distressed areas. Just a brief aside.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Rich, talk to me a little bit about the designation of professional business firm. Why professional and not service or other types of businesses?
They, particularly with the B-Pole Tax, they have the highest assessed rate, higher than any of the other categories that the Commissioner of Revenues Office assesses. So that coupled with the fact that they oftentimes, those types of jobs are some of the highest-paying jobs that we'd like to target, and sort of the professional services, we thought we'd offer some additional incentives for that. And that was a lot of merit of what was in James City. We agreed that would be something we'd like to target.
But it just strikes me that so much of our commercial corridor is service-oriented in hotels and restaurants. And I think for years, we've looked for ways to help those businesses reinvest. And so if we included service industry as a way, as an incentive for them to help offset some of their costs, that might help them reinvest in the property. Carl Long said for many months now that we've got to work on our products. And so if we can find ways to help the service industry, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah. And we still are offering, a couple of those tax incentive grants are offered. It doesn't depend, it doesn't matter what your industry is. So there's just a couple that we targeted specifically at the professional group sector.
Good job on your first presentation.
Thank you.
Judy?
Well, I think we definitely need to go for this. I know it's a lot of work for the staff, but if you don't ask, you'll never find out if you get it. So I think, again, thank you for all the hard work.
Rich, thank you very much for your presentation. With that, I'll open the floor for the public hearing to see if anyone wishes to comment. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action, although we've had a fair amount of discussion.
I think we absolutely should pursue this. It dovetails with everything we've talked about. It targets the areas we've talked about trying to stimulate additional commercial growth. It just seems like something worthwhile. And I like the continuing partnership with the surrounding jurisdictions. Sorry it didn't work out when it was all three. Sorry it didn't work out when it was just the city. But you know, the opportunity to work again with James City County, I think is a good one. And I hope they're able to help us be successful this third time.
Well, let's hope the third time's a charm. So with that, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that City Council adopt Resolution 15-09, authorizing the submission of a joint Virginia Enterprise Zone application with James City County for 2016 designation.
Second.
I have a motion. A second, call the roll, please, Chair.
Ms. Gensler.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Longo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frye.
Aye.
Mr. Postner.
Aye.
Again, Rich, Michelle, thank you for all the work that's gone into this. Thank you, colleagues in James City County as well, because I know these things don't happen without a lot of very hard work.
Well, and just to add to that, the comments or feedback that they receive regarding the quality of the narrative, I think speaks volumes about the quality of work that the economic development departments do in our respective jurisdictions.
Thanks. We'll keep our fingers crossed. Our next order of business are reports. First, the monthly financial statements. Judy, anything in particular?
Well, we have a full fiscal year to look at now, and Finance Director Phil Sarah will be giving a more detailed end-of-the-year report further down our agenda. But we're certainly happy to answer any questions that council may have at this moment.
Any questions? All the financial reports? Not. Monthly Department operating reports, anything in particular, Judy?
I did ask our Public Works Director, Dan Clayton, to update council on two items. We've been quite busy starting the new fiscal year in the spring. First, with our new garbage collection, we're doing with a new contractor in converting the entire city to curbside carts, as well as we've been very busy in repaving, as you've seen around town. So Mr. Clayton's going to give us that update.
Dan, welcome.
Yeah. Just briefly, our garbage update. It's been a busy two weeks. That's the word of the week. But first, I want to just say that my hat's off to our front office, Cindy Floyd and Tammy Rojack. They've done a great job fielding questions with our residents and working with our contractors. And we received about 300 phone calls in the past week, more last week than this week. Particularly, last week was a little bit hectic. We were working with two contractors. We were having, our old contractor, Waste Management, was collecting Monday and Tuesday. At the same time, our new contractor was delivering carts. And also in the nine neighborhoods we had that had converted over voluntarily to a curbside service, Waste Management was picking up those carts. So there's a lot going on out there, and people want to get rid of the old carts. And so we've been having a pretty good time out there. And this week, we started on our new collection with our new garbage contractor. And of course, you know, you're going to get the normal transition issues and not being able to, not being familiar with all of our streets and whatnot. So but they've done pretty well. They had the contract, actually, the previous contract before the last five-year contract. So and they're a good company. So it's working out. And then the fact that the carts are curbside is really, really helpful. They don't have to go back and search in Ms. Jones's backyard in her garage or wherever the cart might be. So everything's out the curbs. That's really helped a lot. Overall, I'd just say that we're about 90% of where we want to be. But we're getting there. And we expect the next wave of issues that are going to come when the students come back and probably have more type of questions like, you know, there's three apartments in this one house, we need more carts. So it's going to be an issue of getting all the students, getting them all settled down. And finally, I just want to mention that the residents have, for the most part, been very understanding and cooperative. And we've heard really very little in the way of complaints about going to curbside service. I know they're not happy, but we're not hearing it. So that's worked out pretty good. So if anybody have any questions, any more questions?
For people who still need backyard service, what, how's that working out? What's your estimate of where we are with that?
We think there's about 30 or so that have, we actually have a form now. We make them fill out. We're not really giving it a lot of tough look at, but we're at least there's an effort there that you want to do backyard service. And I think there's, it's going pretty well. pretty well.
So it's good. Okay, thanks.
That's working out.
Any other questions for Dan on?
No, my, just an observation. Clearly, you know, all the carts have now been delivered and some houses are not occupied because the students are gone, and trash bins are still out. What do you foresee is the process to help educate the citizens about the responsibility of, you know, putting the cart out on trash day and then making sure that it's, you know, in the backyard side yard?
All the stuff we've been putting out, we've tried to put that message in there. But I do suspect we'll have some, we're going to have some carts left out. I know the other day, I was doing my walk, and I was pushing carts off the curb back into the house. I just naturally maybe want to get these things off the curb. It was the Fourth of July, so I want to make sure we have things straightened out. But yeah, it's going to be, could be an issue for us. So we're just.
I think also it's going to be important for neighbors to work with neighbors on this , too. And that's, to me, that's been the most effective way in the past.
Mr. Clayton, if I could, one other question. I'm fascinated by the number of carts that are put out with the lid facing the wrong direction. Does the carrier provide information to people when they see that to help them understand the proper orientation?
We have it. I think there was something in their flyer, I think, that talked about that facing the right direction.
And there's an arrow.
I understand. I understand. But you know, as you drive around, they handle many of them that's facing the street.
If there's that many enough to bother the guy having to get out, I'm sure he'll be putting some things out. But.
Any other questions on the trash?
Speaking of narrow, as you know, a lot of these streets are very narrow, and they're going to be much narrower when the students come back and we have cars parked on the street. The trucks, I watched him do this. He came up my street. The arm was on the other side of the truck. He got out of the truck. He moved my trash bin to the other side, got the trash out, got out of the truck again, moved my trash bin back. I mean.
There's just going to be occasionally, they've got to get out. But if you think about it, you know, Skipworth and all of the.
Can they turn around?
If they could turn around, they could get you on the other side.
Because I'm not the only one on that side of the street. But that's going to happen.
That's a tough turnaround on your, you know, dead-end streets, the big trucks.
Well, I hope they can figure out a better way to do it.
It wastes a lot of time.
Yeah.
Maybe you could wait out there and help them.
Yeah, right.
Put your trash in.
My neighbor would love that.
Enough trash, though.
Yes.
Moving on to paving, we've done quite a bit of paving. We've finished up Route 132, Calplanning Road, Yorkshire Drive, and Indian Springs Road. Last night, midnight, we started on Jamestown Road, particularly in the College Corner area. Had to do it at nighttime. Didn't want to get into residential area. Plus the traffic around College Corner, obviously, you can't work traffic and do that work. So we did start last night there. Tonight, we'll be paving that same area, the College Corner area. And then we'll be moving on. We did get up to the bookstore, the Millen Park. We'll be paving that tonight, too. But then we'll go from the bookstore down to Lake Matoka. That'll be done during the daytime. And I think I've mentioned this before, this concrete pavement under the asphalt, and you get those bumps and whatnot. So we're adding this little thin layer that they call a strata layer of kind of asphalt material that will help us with those joints. And we've been very successful. We did a section of Richmond Road with our, and that's been over 10 years, and it really hasn't reflected back yet. So we're a little bit, the expense involved there, plus delays the project some, too. But nonetheless, I think that's something we all appreciate. And we're thinking with the weather and whatnot. If the weather permits, we'll have Jamestown Road completed by next Friday. And that would leave, the only other paving issue would be along York Street, that York Street Improvement Project is part of that project. While I'm here, I just want to take that, let you folks know that we received some good news this week about next year's paving. The state, they started a new competitive program to provide funding for paving of primary routes in cities based on certain criteria, such as traffic counts and road distress and whatnot. We were approved for $607,000 to pave approximately about a mile and a half of Richmond Road from High Street to the corporate limits. And we bring a resolution to you next month, next month, August, for you to accept the funding and to authorize the city manager to execute the required documents from VOD. So that'll be my shot in the arm for us.
Good news. Thank you. Any questions for Dan on the paving?
I'd just encourage anybody who has wondered why Jamestown Road is the way it is. Now that a good section of it's been milled, you can see the concrete slabs underneath and where the joints are. It makes a lot of sense as to why there have been challenges there.
And just as a side note, it's Dan's staff, particularly Clark, has been out there. And he's really, you can see him communicating well with the subcontractors out there to make sure, you know, things are done correctly and businesses aren't disturbed so much. And so I thank them for that. And I think it's been real helpful.
Thanks for mentioning that.
It's been a smooth process so far. So thanks. And thank all of your staff involved because they're doing a terrific job. Next, we have city mandatory reports. We have.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a question about the Human Services Report.
Yes, okay, sorry.
I'm sorry. The Medicaid active cases are up 200 over the previous year, same month. And I wondered if we knew why. Deputy Director for Human Services, Chris Powell, is here. And he's got the answer for you. Thank you.
Chris, welcome.
Mayor, City Council. The reason for that is kind of twofold. The state recently, you know, about two years ago, started the Common Help Program, which allowed residents to apply online and via telephone. So the access to application, it became easier to apply for Medicaid. Now, that also made it easier for those who were to apply, who actually were able, who were eligible to come onto Medicaid. But also, there was a new program they started called the Plan First Program, which is a family planning program that is a sub-program of Medicaid. And the eligibility criteria is quite high, so that if one applies for Medicaid and is not eligible for the traditional medical provider, medical insurance type Medicaid, then we would also evaluate them for Plan First. And a lot of people have been eligible for that. Now, originally, there was no opt-out. So if you applied for Medicaid, you were applying for Plan First, and whether you wanted or not, you got it. So that is one of the main factors in driving these numbers up. So it's not actually a function of the economy, because with the SNAP, SNAP active cases, they're pretty much insane. It's just with these, with the Affordable Care Act and the Common Help coming online, the online application, that's what's driving the increase in case load.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Now, the city mandatory reports, of which we have three. And the first is the Greater Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance, their quarterly tourism update. And we have President and CEO, Karen Marier. Welcome, Karen. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, city council members. That's okay. And indeed, today, what I'd like to do is just give you a short update, a quarterly update. We began these just about a year ago at the creation of a new metric scorecard. Want to just give you an overall update and tell you that we are indeed making strong progress to improve visitation to the destination in 2015. And the reasons for this are several. We believe that the destination is showing improved performance, thanks in part to the new brand image that we have been working very diligently on for the last 15 months. This image is multi-dimensional. What I mean by that is that we are really working very hard to show the breadth and the depth of activity in regard to tourism. So in the past, when we did research, the number one image that came up for the city of Williamsburg and for the Greater Williamsburg area was, of course, history. And of course, history is still now a core identifier. But we're also working very high, very hard to make sure that people identify us with arts, with the outdoors, and sports, and also our culinary offerings. And so we think, again, by broadening the definition of what visitors can do here, we're becoming more relevant and more attractive. The new marketing campaign that builds off of that brand image is indeed connecting with our target audiences. And at the end of this presentation, I'm going to take one minute and show you two short pieces of marketing material that have been created. One of, always my disappointment is that because we're always marketing outside of our area, we all don't get to see our own advertising. We get to see advertising for Disney and Orlando and different places. But so many of our citizens don't actually see the work that we're creating for other parts of the country. We've also received quite a bit of positive national press coverage for the destination. Some of that is in what we call the endemic travel tourism magazines, but also in many other lifestyle magazines and culinary and so forth. So people are reading more about, again, the kind of vacation that they could have here in Williamsburg. Consumer Confidence Index is also up, and we've been watching this and do watch this quarterly. But more importantly, we look at it on an annual basis. Just to give you a short example, right now, the index is between 95 and 104 for 2015 to date versus last year in 2014, when that index was 80 to 94. And the year before, in 2013, that Consumer Confidence Index was as low as 58 and spanning up to 82. So many of the economists on the national scene posit that, you know, normally you want to see that index in the high 90s. And when you do see it in the 90s and going over 100, that's when we start to see economic activity really start to intensify. So again, that's a contributing factor. We also know that the pent-up demand after the harsh winter in a couple of our key feeder markets, the Northeast and Mid-Atlantic, the amount of snow and ice that New England and Mid-Atlantic had, even places like Washington, D.C. and Baltimore, which are very important to our tourism, meant that they were very, very anxious to take those vacations as soon as their children were finished with the school season. And gas prices continue to be quite low and stable. Last year at this time, gasoline on a national basis was averaging $3.65. And today, the national average is 2.756. And of course, here locally, gas is more around the 2.55 level. So again, those are good things for the tourists because it means they have just a little bit more money in their wallet, which they can spend on hotels and attractions and restaurants and so forth. This is the actual scorecard, which, you know, we worked diligently last summer on. And this is the same scorecard, meaning the same core metrics along the left-hand column that we're using to measure our success, not just here in the city, but also James City County, York County. And then we cut the data one last time to look at the overall region. And today, I'm sharing with you the city's specific metrics, starting with total tourism expenditures. I wish I had a number for you. This is a data set that comes from our friends at the state, the Virginia Tourism Corporation. It is still pending for 2014, even though it's July of 2015. We will not get that data until probably late August or early September of this year. So unfortunately, there is about an 18-month lag. But I do want to remind you that the 2013 result was that total tourism expenditures for Greater Williamsburg were at $1.1 billion. And that was second only to Virginia Beach in our state, which came in at $1.2 billion. So this is something that I constantly educate people on because people don't realize that after Virginia Beach, the Greater Williamsburg area is, again, a very, very important economic driver from a tourism perspective in the entire state of Virginia. So we would expect, when we see the 2014 numbers, that they will have risen to some degree over that $1.1 billion number that was the last data point that we have. The next line down is the total number of hotel rooms. And we are seeing that there is a decrease in stock, and that is because of the redevelopment of the Country Hearth Inn and Suites. So there's a negative 57 hotel rooms because of that. And that data comes directly from the city assessor's office. The number of timeshare rooms has remained flat at 213 rooms. Again, we expect to see this start to change as we have new timeshare development in the city about to come online later this year. So we'll be looking at that. And the total number of rooms that are classified as B&amp;B or IN has also remained flat since the last quarterly report at 84 rooms. So that makes our total lodging rooms for the city of Williamsburg 3739, which again is minus 57. The number of occupied hotels, B&amp;Bs, and timeshares we've aggregated is 198,934, which is an increase of just under 4%, or 3.92. And this is from municipal tax data. And again, this data point is through May of 2015. The number of occupied timeshare rentals, we do not have that categorized. What I mean by that is it's not specifically broken out. It is included in that number above of 198,934. We would like to humbly suggest that over time, the city do consider, especially as more timeshares are brought online, that a separate look at the timeshare stock would be advisable. This is done in James City County and York County, but is not done in the city. So again, that number is just sort of rolled in with the hotels, and we have no way of really pulling out the timeshare occupied.
Just for clarification, that number that you're requesting or looking for, the number of occupied timeshare rentals, is the number of timeshare rooms that are sold as overnight accommodations to transit?
Correct. Transient rooms versus owner occupied.
Right. For anybody who's watching at this moment.
Correct. But again, right now, with only two timeshares in the city, I believe there's been some reluctance to do that because then we would be, in theory, sharing some proprietary data. But I believe if we've got four in the city, then the likelihood of that happening would be lessened. As I said, the two counties do break out that data. Room night demand growth is 7,505, which again is up 3.92%. This is data through the month of May. Room sales are at $21,513,400, which is an increase of 7.44%. And again, that data is through May of this year. Room sales tax, again, is the same metric in regard to the percentage increase of 7.44%, but in real dollars is $1,075,760. The average daily rate is something we've been looking at closely in the city as well as in the destination. And I'm happy to say that it is continuing to move in the right direction. It's a positive indicator, up 3.39%, now sitting at 108.14. And meals tax is also up 6.11%, or $2,526,763. And again, that data is through May. With that being said, I would like to recognize, as many restaurateurs have shared with me, that we understand that that's not just volume, that is restaurateurs passing on the price of goods and services. As those have increased with inflation, they are passing those on to their customers. So that is partially to explain what's driving up the meals tax number. Retail sales tax are through April. So again, the lag is a little bit greater for retail sales tax, but that is also up 4.77%, or $1,227,059. And lastly, you know, we talked about this at the last quarterly session. We continue to debate at the alliance as to whether or not we show this. But just because we agreed this was such an important metric, we wanted to keep the average length of stay from the 2013 research data on here. But we are planning to look at new research for 2016 so we can update this data point. Because again, this is going on close to two and a half years old. And what we'd like to do is be able to do a study that would allow us to measure a couple of different metrics, including length of stay. And in an ideal fashion, we would have that length of stay metric measured once a year, or the very least every other year, so that we're getting fresh data. We have received bids to actually measure that data this year, but we declined to do that because it was over $30,000 to conduct that research. And we thought that was not an advisable amount of money to pay to collect that data at this point. But we are continuing to look at that and believe that that is something that we will do going into 2016. Tourism contingency funding. Again, we first want to say thank you for the additional $100,000 that is to be allocated to the alliance specifically for tourism marketing in the fiscal 2015-16 budget commencing just last week, July 1. Consistent with our funding request when we entered this last November, in December, we have really taken a hard look now that we know that you have secured these funds for us as to how to invest them. And we believe that the best way to invest them are in marketing programs that will have a very heavy digital component. have a very heavy digital component, specifically search engine marketing and online banner advertising, some of which will include embedded videos, which are working very well for us. We also do anticipate doing some radio and some print formats as we see appropriate and affordable in the key markets that we continue to market in, which are Washington DC, Raleigh, North Carolina, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and Baltimore, Maryland. Specifically, that $100,000, we believe the best way to break that out and invest would be to take $25,000 of that investment for Williamsburg Fall Arts Marketing. So that would commence here probably in September in order to have the most effective and efficient program for the September-October timeframe. We've then allocated $30,000 for what we're dubbing Winter Marketing. We want this to be inclusive of the Christmas in Williamsburg efforts that were very successful last year, but also extend that off into some January programs, such as the Winter Blues Jazz Festival, which was an inaugural event in 2015 that happened on Martin Luther King Weekend and is planned again for 2016. So most of that marketing, again, would happen in a timeframe of late November, December, and January for maximum impact. We are then allocating $20,000 for Williamsburg Spring Arts Marketing. This would be new marketing. If you recall, Williamsburg Spring Arts was just created this year, just a few months ago, and we did not have any budget allocated to really heavily market it. So we did promote it. We used a lot of alliance internal communications, email blasts, posters, flyers, and, you know, did a lot of things like that, but we were not actually able to run a lot of print advertising or do radio or any digital formats because we did not have any marketing dollars for that. So this year, we'll be able to really put forth, I think, a more robust effort on behalf of Spring Arts. And that, again, would happen in that March-Equal timeframe of next spring. And lastly, $25,000 would be allocated for Summer Marketing Efforts, again, to promote in our top feeder markets like Washington DC, Baltimore, Philadelphia, and Raleigh. Again, we're not entirely sure what the Summer Marketing Effort will be. Part of that will be dependent on the success of this year's Summer Marketing Effort, which is the Summer of Freedom Music Concert Series that will happen this July 31, August 1, and August 2. So we'll be monitoring, obviously, the effectiveness of that and the ROI, and then we'll make a determination as to whether or not we want to continue that or whether or not we would like to do some other summer programs. But it is still our vision that we would be marketing in all four quarters, not just in the so-called shoulder seasons, in order to keep the momentum going from a tourism marketing standpoint. And I just wanted to share with you that, you know, again, our plan is to continue to update you. So today, as I mentioned earlier, we're sharing with you data that is through May of 2015 with the exception of the sales tax, which is April. Our next update we would plan would be in October, and that would reflect data through August. Our December update would reflect data through October, and then next March, we would be able to have data that reflects the full calendar year through December of 2015. So that's the plan right now. Again, this is my last note. We are working on the York County scorecard right now and the James City County scorecard. Once those are completed, we are awaiting some data from their finance offices, and once we have that data, we will be able to compose the regional scorecard to be able to come back and share that with you. So the reason I'm not sharing that with you today is that that is incomplete due to the other two jurisdictions not having the data as readily in supply. So I want to especially commend Mr. Sarah and his team for working so well with us, as well as City Manager Ms. Miller, just really working very, very cooperatively with us to help us get the data and making sure that everything is accurate and timely so that we can share this with you each quarter. So thank you very much.
Karen, thank you very much for being here and bringing some good news. We appreciate that. I also want to recognize that Bob Harris from your staff is here as well as--
And my chair, Mr. Carl Um.
Your board chair, Carl Um. So thank you both for being here as well. Let me turn to council for questions and comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's a hard question.
From Virginia.
Williamsburg's just beautiful.
Because we have rural seekers and not such rural seekers, I try to find something that everybody likes. This is a very good spot to do that.
The most exhilarating part about this vacation was being with the whole family.
It was amazing.
Yeah.
Not possible.
Where are the shells?
When we go on vacation, it's hard to find like those little activities that are kind of fun and educational.
I think with Williamsburg, you have all of that educational part rolled into the fun that's already here.
This probably was one I had on Sunday.
As you can see, the call to action is really to drive people to our website. Our website traffic is up 28% year-over-year, which is very encouraging, and the full-length videos are there. So I encourage you, if you haven't had a chance to see the full videos, we have four videos on each of the families for a total of eight videos that are on the website. And right now, those are the highest level of engagement. People are spending, on average, over two minutes watching those videos and then, you know, surfing around to other parts of the website to look at attractions, activities, lodging, and so forth. So if you haven't had a chance to see those videos, I encourage you to take a look.
Were those videos developed by WADMAC and--
Yes, they are. These, my staff in conjunction with WADMAC, worked with our advertising agency. Most of this filming was done at the end of last summer in August and September, and then we edited them. And this campaign began in March and is going to continue to run through the end of July. And then digital will continue on and search and social through August and September.
Thanks. And I know Doug Ponce is our representative to WADMAC, so thank you for the good work in doing there. And the numbers you brought today suggest that some things are starting to happen as a result of some of those efforts. Thank you. Any comments?
Sure. Just on the scorecard, there are a lot of green arrows, and that's really encouraging. And we're heading into, obviously, some critical months. We've just finished June, but July and August are coming up. And, you know, unfortunately, that's where, in the past couple of years, we've seen disappointing summer months. What is your sense, or do you have any right now of how things are going through June and what might, July and August might hold?
Again, I don't have full June numbers, but the early indicators are that June, this year, is behaving very differently than last year, absolutely right. Last year, we had, again, a very disappointing winter, which had us kind of starting in the hole. And then our spring break time period was okay, but then as soon as we hit June, we started to really see, you know, a pretty significant decrease. And when that happens, it's very hard to sort of bounce back and recover in July and August. We did, but it was sort of a very slow incremental build. This year, we're seeing just the opposite. We're seeing very strong, our June numbers, again, preliminary numbers looking quite good. And the very encouraging news is that when we look at some of the things that are on the books, particularly in conference and group sales among lodging, you know, they're reporting that those look quite strong for July and August. So what's on the books on what I'd call the non-leisure side is a pretty good indicator that we'll also experience corresponding, you know, leisure numbers. So again, we're cautiously optimistic that June will roll into, again, evidence of a strong July and August.
Sure. And, you know, last June was, I won't say it was so bad, but it was not good. And so, you know, there's the thought that, well, the bar's kind of low there, so we certainly hope there's growth. And we could say that for the last several years, we've been in a lull in the tourism market here, and so, but we can't go forward until the arrows start turning green. And that's what we have here, and it's all good news, and we have to keep working to make sure those arrows keep going in the right direction. I do have two questions. The core markets that you're advertising in, New York's not in there, Boston's not there, is that because you just have limited funds and you can't do everything? Or is there something about the driving distance from those markets for the programs that we're advertising? We think it might just be too far for somebody to make that kind of trip.
No, I mean, certainly, you know, in a wish list scenario, we would love to be in New York in particular. New Yorkers, New Jerseyites, they do like this part of the country. They love the Mid-Atlantic. And we have identified with our advertising agency that that 350-mile sort of circle radius is prime market area for us. However, the funds just simply do not carry us to go into New York in a major way. We continue to do digital advertising in New York, and we've done a lot of new things in New York this year, the least of which was a major press tour that we did in May in New York City with New York Press and national editors. So we're not going to in any way give up on New York. It's just a very, very expensive market for us to advertise in, in a consistent way. And Boston, we'll continue to look at. It's an aspirational market for us, just the way Atlanta would be an aspirational market for us to the south. But we need to sort of concentrate on those four, and we have by no means, with the dollars we have saturated, our ability to penetrate those markets at this point.
And not so much Charlotte? I mean, it'd be more Atlanta than Charlotte?
Charlotte and overall, we look first at Raleigh-Durham. Charlotte has not been something that we have consistently looked at. Charlotte's visitation tends to go west to Asheville.
Could you give us just, I hate to ask you if it's not on your agenda, but just a minute update on the Harvest Festival?
Certainly. Happy to talk about the Harvest Festival. We are working towards that November 11 through 15 Culinary Festival, and at this stage, we will have a website live at the end of this month. We have right now 34 participating companies, organizations on the culinary side, and we now have several lodging partners who have come on to add packages as well. So we are doing a big push right now within the lodging industry to have as many of those folks that would like to participate offer any kind of package to the people that would be coming down for the festival. And we're also working diligently on sponsorship right now. We have secured some sponsorship, but we'd like to secure some additional sponsors so that we have enough marketing funds to continue getting the word out. So that marketing campaign really won't come into effect probably until September, and then it will be a very, very heavy September, October, early November push in order to drive as many visitors here for that celebration. So it's going along really well. Again, this is an inaugural effort. We're mirroring a lot of these efforts on other destinations like Charleston that have done these kinds of events. We're very gratified by the amount of participation we received so far. People seem to be generally very excited about it, and we're starting to actually reach out to the Longleaf National Press, and they're excited and interested to hear. We've already had three this week who have agreed to come as our guests to cover the festival, which is really great. Doesn't give us ink prior to the festival, but it would be lovely to have them come, be our guests, participate, see how wonderful it is, and then write a nice big story that will go out into their publications and help us fuel, you know, tourism for the spring, but then obviously for the following year. So so far, we are on track to continue to build this, I think, into a very smart program. Our goal continues to be to sell 5,000 tickets to this four-and-a-half-day festival.
Well, that intermediate component is very important as we talk about refreshing the brand perception of Williamsburg in the region, on the East Coast, and across the nation. We can't do it if we don't let people know what's happened here after the fact so they can see proof of, hey, that place looks really kind of cool. We've got to go there. So that's really important. And thank you very much for this report and for everything that the alliance is doing. Mr. Harris, Mr. Um, thank you for being here.
One, if I had one quick follow-up. Along with this next time, do you think you could also do a two- and three-year trend? Because what you're doing is year-over-year, but you're not giving sort of a longer historical perspective. And, you know, you can't do it all on this one, but a follow-up chart that we do, you know, two-year and three-year trends might be helpful also.
We will take a look at pulling that together.
And just as a follow-up to that, you know, we just finished our physical year, physical year.
It was physical.
Could we challenge you all to maybe take the year-end numbers for us and then put them in this format for us?
Sure. So you'd like to look at the city's fiscal--
Year, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, once the data's there, you can chop it many different ways. But I think that the trend things would be useful, particularly going into the future. Sorry, Scott.
Well, my comment was going to be, I appreciate how this chart is continuing to evolve, and these are just ways it's going to continue to get better.
Doug?
Did they meet your expectations, these numbers, these percentages?
That's a good question. I always want them to be better, to be honest. So I, again, I am gratified that we're moving in the right direction. I think we're making progress. I will be able to answer that, I think, a little bit better once I see the York County and the James City County data and see how the whole destination as a unit is performing. I suspect that the trend line will be similar, but, you know, slightly different. So again, I think that we're just really at the start of kind of starting to build this momentum. And to echo what Vice Mayor Farling said, I think now's the time to actually put our foot on the pedal and to push the momentum further. So I am happy to see that the numbers are going in the right direction, but we always want them to be bigger.
Sure. With the list of things that you list here as showing improvement, consumer confidence and gas prices, what's your expectation of the future? Do you have any goals relative to these numbers moving forward?
I think, again, if some of those larger national trend lines, again, are forecasted to continue for at least the remainder of this calendar year, I think the real sort of differentiating factor is the marketing campaign. And I am very pleased with the marketing campaign. It has exceeded my expectations in terms of rebranding us and having people understand that we do have great culinary offerings here. Just again, to show a little girl out canoeing on a river is not what normally people think of when they think of Williamsburg. But I think they're shattering some of the old myths, and they are doing some of the things we need to do overall. So I think that that's the area where we want to continue to optimize our performance there with the budget we have. I think we've just started on that marketing campaign, so I think that, again, there's room for us to continue to grow into this new image, if you will, over the next year or two. And that's what I would expect is going to continue to help us drive performance more so than whether the gasoline prices go up and down a few pennies or so forth. So that's where I think our big opportunity really lies this year and next.
And I think that's a good point, you know, that the breadth and scope of our destination really hasn't been communicated. So doing that, you know, moving forward in what we've been doing in the last few months and changing, that message is going to be helpful. But to that, where are we with sports? I know we've talked about, you know, aquatic centers, field houses. Have you, has your organization had any follow-up discussions with the folks that did the feasibility study?
We have not had any discussions with the folks doing the feasibility study, but I am happy to report that the sports economic impact that we have been working on is almost complete. So if you recall, we hired Dr. Patrick Rich of Sports Impact, and he has been working on that. We actually had some weather-related delays with the few tournaments that were going to be surveyed in February, March, but because of snow and ice and rain and so forth, those were delayed to happen more in the April-May timeframe. So now all the data is in for the 2015 survey as well as looking at full year 2014. So that is something that I'm really excited to see that report and really go through that and have a custom formula, if you will, for assessing what sports tournaments do for our destination. I think that will be valuable information for you on council. I think it will also be very valuable for the board supervisors in James City County and York County. When you have that, I think it probably makes quite a bit of sense to convene a meeting to discuss that and sort of, again, reassess what our options are and what the vision is and where we'd like to go with sports marketing. So right now, we're continuing to do very, very well there, but that's really a tribute to your Parks and Recs department. Ms. Bryerson, who is awarded today and celebrated today, and her whole team, as well as the two municipalities, we're using the assets that we have in trying to maximize them, but that is not a sustainable, long-term approach to sports marketing. So hopefully, this will be another piece of insight and information that will allow you all to make some decisions. And of course, the alliance would love to have an opportunity to give you our point of view on what we think could be beneficial to keep driving sports tourism.
Would it be possible to make that part of your next quarterly?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Report to us.
And it just, and you don't have to give me the answer today, but I know that, that there was some money that went to study affordability, as that was a question that came up in, in a presentation that was given. Has that been concluded?
That, that study was actually WADMAC, not the Alliance, and I believe that Lucky has completed that, but I have not looked at that. So we'll need to take a look at that and see where we are. That's probably going to go on a WADMAC agenda coming up soon. That's not an Alliance study.
It's hard to separate, you know?
It's all tourism.
It's all the same people.
It's all good. It's tourism.
Yeah, and, you know, again...
Just a different budget.
You know, if, if, if it's appropriate in your next quarterly report, if somebody from WADMAC could come, give us an update on that since it's, it's part, part and parcel of, of that, that whole sports tourism question, question for us.
Are you referring again to Mr. Pons' question around the affordability study?
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't know sort of what's going to be the best way to get, make that part of, of the presentation.
Absolutely. That's, that's not a problem.
Judy, sorry, I'm...
That's a perfect day, all right. It seems to me, though, we've pretty much covered everything. Quite the app. So I just wanted to say thank you for coming. I know it's, it's a big chunk out of your day.
My pleasure.
The city, listening to us talk about trash.
Appreciate the opportunity to share, especially when the numbers and the green arrows are passing off.
Green arrows are good. Karen, thank you. And Bob and Carl, thank you for being here as well. We appreciate it, and we look forward to your next visit.
I just had one more thing. And thanks to Mr. Foster for being our representative with the Alliance.
I had less questions about this because this is the second time.
You just appreciate your efforts in that regard.
And part of what was danced around but not quite said regarding sports marketing, it's really up to the locale is to take the lead. Once we have all the information, in the near, in the near term, and I'm talking about a year from now, to set the course for what the role sports plays in this destination. Because we can rely on the chamber to, to administer, but it's up to us to make facilities decisions, and that's the next juncture.
And, and that's, that's why it's so important to get that information as part of that decision process.
I agree. I think that will really help you be able to have that discussion.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Karen.
Appreciate it.
Next, city manager report is tourism promotion contingency request update. Judy?
Yes. So at the April work session, council received an update on the request for funding from the one-time General Fund Capital Reserves for Tourism Initiatives. Council has discussed the request also during the May and June meetings. We had several outstanding requests that need decisions, as well as options for making decisions. Future funding decisions were also discussed. So I wanted to provide an update to council on where we were and also talk about the two existing requests that, that remain and need decisions. First, to date, the balance is right under $139,000, remains in that fund. And you can see in the memo how that breaks down as far as what we've spent to date. One of the items that was outstanding and was mentioned a few minutes ago regarding the Winter Blues Jazz Fest was a request for marketing of the 2016 festival for $6,000. That $6,000 is going to be covered in the additional $100,000 provided to the chamber and FY16 from the city. So there's no action that needs to occur on that request. We do have two requests remaining, and that require decisions. First is for Festival Williamsburg. As the council is aware, there's been an additional request for $50,000 from the Virginia Arts Festival for the 2016 Festival Williamsburg. This is to help celebrate the 20th anniversary season of, of the festival and to support special one-time performances specifically at Festival Williamsburg. If the additional $50,000 is funded, the city's funding for FY16 total would be $100,000. And that letter that was requested that is attached to the memo as well. The second item that's remaining is a request from the Williamsburg Hotel-Motel Association for a visitor guide map. They've requested $20,000 to print 650,000 pull-out maps and the Go Williamsburg Visitors Guide. Some additional information on that proposal was also provided as part of the memo today. And I wanted to make council aware, although we do have the existing two requests out there from Festival Williamsburg and the Hotel-Motel Association, we also anticipate in the near future requests from the Virginia Symphony Orchestra to support their Williamsburg Concert Series in the near future. So the recommendation is that council approve the additional funding, the amount of $50,000 for the 2016 Festival Williamsburg, and that $10,000 be approved for the printing of a city pull-out map for the Williamsburg Hotel-Motel Visitor Guide, and that both of these requests be funded from the balance of the tourism promotion contingency.
That's the staff recommendation.
The staff recommendation, yes.
Thank you. Maybe we should break this down and talk first about Festival Williamsburg and then about...
Good question. And it's not...
Yeah, neither one.
The part above for, about the, the monies allocated to date, the last piece of clay is $38,665. Is that after we've raised the $8,500? Or does the $8,500 offset?
It offsets it. $8,500 offsets it. So, so that's what you see in that, that balance to date includes that, the offset money.
And efforts are still going on for sponsorships and what have you.
My understanding is that's true. True. Yes.
What, what do you anticipate there? Do you have any sense of what events?
I honestly don't. I'm sorry. I mean, we're hoping to break $10,000, but, I'm sorry. There's a lot of people working on it, not...
No, no, no.
Sorry, thank you.
Thanks. Festival Williamsburg, any questions, comments? I, I will say that we did, the city arranged a meeting between the Virginia Arts Festival staff and Colonial Williamsburg to talk about their, Colonial Williamsburg's possible role in next year's 20th year celebration. I think we had a very good discussion and, and talking about venues and other things. So we'll have to see exactly where that goes. But Judy, do you want, do you have anything to add to that?
I, I guess, other than, I think there, there's, all the stakeholders are pretty open to looking at some venues that, that could hold more, more people and guests for these events, and really thinking creatively about how we use the assets in the city.
And that, that's a real key to Festival Williamsburg, I think, has been in the past. We, we have limited venues, and that's sort of been a constraint on what they can do. If, if, if a venue that can serve more people becomes available, then I think the, the quality of what they can do changes dramatically. So, so that's an ongoing conversation that we're facilitating between the Virginia Arts Festival and the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation.
Has the college been part of those discussions?
They, they have been in the past. They, they, they have been approached about that. A lot of it is, is weather-related, too.
Sure.
And so the, the, you know, because originally, Festival Williamsburg took place in the Sunken Garden, and that created weather problems and what have you. So, so...
I was thinking of 5A.
Well, the, the problem with 5A Capitol Hall is that it, at some point in the near future, it will undergo renovation.
That's true.
With the addition of the music, and instead of being the 800 seats, or 850 it is now, it's going to be down to 500 seats and another 500 seat. So in terms of creating venues that serve these purposes, I, I don't think that's going to be a direction we go in.
Well, I, I'd like to say I'm in favor of, of funding this celebration. I, I've gone to all the Festival Williamsburg things the last few years, and the, the quality is very good, and it attracts a lot of people, fills up the Virginia room over and over and over. And I, my feeling is they could probably sell more tickets if they had more venues, more performances. So I think this would be money well spent because it does, the people I talk to in the audience are typically from the Virginia Beach, Norfolk area. So...
And they've done a fair amount of surveying of, of where people come from and what have you. We have information on that if you, if you like. Any other thoughts?
Comfortable funding, both of them, as requested.
My one comment is, I, I appreciate it's the 20th anniversary, and I think that's something to celebrate. It's a terrific program. But $100,000 begins to become a lot of eggs to put in one weekend. So as, as long as this is understood that it is, and I think it's pretty clear, but just to emphasize the point, it is a one-time additional infusion of money and not something that we're going to be able to sustain over a longer period.
Yeah, and, and we've actually had discussions with them about what is the best time for Festival Williamsburg. It's traditionally been sort of the end of, of May, but that may not be the best time for, for them or for us to have it. So I think, I think there are a lot of balls in the air right now as we move forward with this. But I think the, their commitment to creating this Festival Williamsburg and then continuing has been important. And it seems to me we can say, yeah, this 20th anniversary, and what, will it be the 12th or 13th anniversary of Festival Williamsburg?
The 13th.
Yeah, I think it will be the 13th year. So, so I think, I think it's worth doing it on a one-time basis and, and then seeing what the impact is as we think about future funding.
And it strikes me, with both of these applications, you know, we're talking about tourism investment fund. And I think, being that this is the 20th anniversary, and as Councilwoman Midsen just pointed out, you know, it fills Virginia room, and that drives business to a local business. And it probably not just Virginia room, but residual businesses around it. And, and I think with both of these investments, what we're doing is we're putting money that will help drive consumers to city businesses, and that's our goal. And so...
Also, you know, the addition of a larger package program, cooperating with restaurants, hotels in an enhanced way, and then cooperating with the local stakeholders who market, that's taken it to the next level, which...
And that, that's where the Tourism Alliance can come into play, too. I mean, I think we've not sort of really pursued with them sort of what, what possibilities exist there.
And it's, I guess this is two weeks after graduation, so there's typically a little bit of a pause. So it'd be good to keep things...
Yeah, and I'm, I'm willing to support the map, although I, I, you know, when, when I travel anymore, I use my phone. So I, I hope that if we, because my phone can get maps to everything. I'm hoping that if we do this, that, that we, the money we spend designing the map, you know, it will become sort of the city's property that can then be used on the tourism website of, of the Chamber Tourism Alliance, on the city website, be offered to anyone who wants to use it. Because tra, yeah, I'm an old guy, and if I use it, I guarantee you, everybody, you know, younger than me is doing the same thing. So, you know, the, the key is to have a, a product that's going to be usable in as many ways as possible. So I don't know exactly where that stands.
I think that's the case because the magazine is online, and there is a digital component to it. But even beyond that, it's, you know, 600, it's the number one publication in the state. And as you pointed out at a recent meeting, that you were approached by somebody with a paper map. And I think for, from a tourist perspective, having that tangible piece of information in their hands is, is something that they still seek.
Yeah, I, I do, but I, I think that's also sort of a, an older technology that's, that's going to be bypassed and is being bypassed right now. So that, to the extent we can have that product to, to be used in other ways is, is important. So is that part of the, I guess I'm talking to Michelle, and you're, is that part of the, the vision for this, is that it will become sort of a map that's created and then can be used in lots of different ways and, and can be, you know, put on websites, you know, either individual hotel websites or the Tourism Alliance website, our website, Busch Gardens website, you know? Is, is that the way that you're thinking about it, or what?
That has not been part of the conversation, but I think that's an excellent point.
I mean, I, I would be willing to spend the money if that's part of the...
I think we can add that as part of the agreement for funding as one of the requirements, that the city then would get to own it and be able to share it.
Yeah, right.
Share it with whoever are tourism partners in the city or regionally who would like to have it as well. So it then becomes a tool that's not only used in the magazine, but can be used in other forms as well. We can easily do that.
Yeah, I heard the number yesterday, and I'm not sure it was accurate, so I'm not going to repeat it. But the amount of restaurants between, really SunTrust on Prince George Street and Triangle Building and Rick's Cheesesteak is going to be significant, significantly increased within the next six months.
Already.
It already has. And really bringing emphasis to that downtown area is, is important. And so often, in the grand map of Williamsburg, downtown's just a couple extra blocks. And if you're not calling out those specific businesses in a way that draws attention and makes, makes it tangible for folks, we're really missing out. And I, I take your point on print, physical print and using a map as being antiquated. But if, if someone, if it's tangible to where they're going to be walking around anyway, they can see the relation, then they're more likely to punch it into Google Maps and get there.
I, I think, I think you got to get it out there as many, many places as you can. And, and in many different formats, and, and you're going to get, you know, lots of people that way.
Right. You know, just as far as emphasis on downtown, it's in our specific interest and the interest of the tourists, I think it's worked a lot.
I'd also like to, maybe Ms. Miller, you could talk about what you talked to me about. I'm worried about quality. I want it to look good. I don't want ads all over it. You know, I want it to be...
With this particular project, to make sure that it, it really points out to all the areas we want to point out, and it really, the design is what we want it to be, the staff here at the city would work closely with the designers of the map to make sure it's really the, the quality map we want and to limit, if not exclude, any ads that need to be on those page and those kinds of things so that we're, we're directly involved in sort of the design aspect of it. And I think we can make that work as well.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm hearing a consensus to...
Can I say a couple things?
Yeah.
I didn't get to go first. The EDA previously did a map, a printed map that we distributed to local businesses and put in key areas as distribution points. And they discontinued that effort. What I would like to hear, not, I don't think we have time today, but I've asked before, but at some point, if we could have benefit of that conversation and understand their thought process on why they went away with the printed map, that would be helpful to know. In the interim, I think it's fine to go ahead and fund this because this amount is a fraction of what the EDA map was, was about, it's about a quarter to a third, to a quarter, what?
Oh, for the EDA map, we spent about $20,000.
Okay, so half. So then, you know, this is a nice intermediary effort. But I really would like to understand that. And we also need to look at, if you could think about this with the designing of the map, I understand it was going to be detachable so people could take it out of the magazine. The only problem with that is then you have a magazine sitting in a, I guess if it's in a hotel room, with no map inside of it for the next person, unless somebody places that. It would be really helpful, and maybe this is on there, on the map, if there's a way you can easily with your phone, download the map to your phone. So you can take it with you without taking it out of the magazine. The other thing this reinforces to me is we need to expand the wayfinding efforts in the downtown area with something similar to the Merchant Square kiosks that help people, as these new businesses come online, and we bring people down the Prince George Street corridor to the Triangle Building, past the Imperial Building, and past the Griffin Arms, and past the Prince George Commons, what's, what's in these buildings? And let's help the guests get where they want to go multiple ways, because one solution isn't going to work for everybody.
And that, that, that actually is, is in process. We've had conversations with Colonial Williamsburg and Merchant Square Association about using their format. We've gotten their agreement to do that. So I think the next step is for us to, to begin to, to take advantage of that and, and actually create, sort of extend that Merchant Square format for wayfinding into the Prince George Street down to, to the Triangle Building and to, to the deli. So I think, Ms. Miller, would you maybe next month give us an update on sort of where that stands and how we're proceeding with it? with that?
Sure.
But the initial discussions have taken place and we've gotten the agreement, so I think.
And it may turn out, and hopefully there'll be also consideration, if we're going to adopt what Merchant Square is doing, and I wasn't necessarily advocating that we replicate that, but we have some wayfinding method, is theirs the right model, you know, maybe that can be improved upon, so hopefully that, those conversations will happen too. Thank you, that's all, I support both of these.
But building on the whole technology, I think you're going to have apps that will help you direct around, and I know that there's several folks locally that are putting together kind of wayfinding apps.
And we have one. The city has one, so.
And that is what the EDA used to replace its paper map, was the city's wayfinding app, all the businesses are listed there.
Of which this can then become.
So maybe on the map, some correction to our wayfinding app, that they're not going to look at it, you guys track you directly to that as well, so I think those are the kind of things we need to figure out work on with the map design.
Anything else?
Funding their requests, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think I have, I'm hearing a consensus.
Are we funding at staff recommendation level, is that what we're doing?
Have you taken an action? Mm-hmm, okay.
Is that kind of okay?
I mean, if that's a consensus.
We need a formal motion.
Why this time?
Because Chris said so.
Why this time?
You need to, I mean, you're approving a staff recommendation regarding the funding, so I suggest that you do it as a formal motion as opposed to doing it informally.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve additional funding in the amount of $50,000 for 2016 Festival Williamsburg, and that $10,000 be approved for the printing of the city pullout map and the Williamsburg Hotel Motel Association visitor guide, and that both be funded from the balance of the tourism promotion contingency.
Second. I have a motion, a second call, roll please, Jerry.
Mr. Newness.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fireland.
Aye.
I think before we spend any more of this money, let's develop a plan of what we're going to do, including how we're going to fill this pot up if we're going to continue. I think we just kind of, maybe a bad choice of word, but it's slapshot, we do it one way, one time, and we do it another way, another time, so I think we should develop some consistency here.
What we did today was the result of our last discussion about this, is the process for doing it, I think what we can ask staff for is to develop a set of criteria that we might look at as these come forward, but I think we pretty much have, as a result of our discussions over the last two months, come to the conclusion that this is the way we want to do it, and we want to do it with a formal motion to go forward.
I don't know that there's been a conclusion, but maybe we should have something written so that we understand collectively what that conclusion is.
Well, and I think there was some conversation about doing that, and these two requests were determined to be time-sensitive, and so the hope was that we could make a decision to move forward and let the entities then plan appropriately based upon whether or not the money was going to be allocated, just like we, First Night was even, you know, a little ahead of that, so I can appreciate we've done it a little bit differently each time, but part of it is because of the urgency that was felt by the organization, so I don't think we have anything else pending at the moment, other than what you might expect in the pipeline, so now we should have some time to develop a consistent process, and I agree we should have one.
Yeah, thank you, but I think that's, but that's a general agreement. Okay, next report is the year-end financial report, Mr. Sarah, and you've got some good news for us as well.
Thank you, Mayor, I want the members of council, we're going to recap the fiscal year 2015, general fund operating and capital projects for the year, we'll look at the trend graph that you've seen many times, we'll look at the budget versus actual revenues and expenditures, cash bases, talk a little bit about accruals that'll be added to those, and then give a little information on where we think the reserves will be after all is said and done when the audit is completed in December. And this is a history, the operating results compared to budget going back to 2006, you've seen this recently in the budget document, and it's updated here and include the estimated results for the year that just ended, June 30th, and you can clearly see where the debt and cash budget line lies, with revenues over budget slightly and expenditures under budget by a much greater degree, so this is what's happened over the last four years, going back to 2010, looking back to 2009, surpluses were really a result of expenditure savings, and that's not the case for the most part before the recession back here, but you can see the gap here is still consistent with the last four years, and that's what I want to talk about is that gap for this year. And then looking at the revenues, getting into the detail on a cash basis again, revenues are about $98,000 higher than budget for the year, property taxes were over budget for new construction that was not budgeted, we never budgeted for new construction, other local taxes that were over budget, even on a cash basis, mostly through business license, bank stock taxes, pre-gradation taxes, and neo taxes, which all four of those are a good sign, most definitely, and the licensing permits were significantly over budget from electrical, plumbing, and mechanical permits, with increased building activity, mostly from the projects at Riverside Development. Use of money in property was under budget because of the vacancy of the Triangle Building that has since been occupied just recently, so that'll help in the future. Other categories shown will be over budget once accruals are made during the auditing process. We're estimating about $345,000 in accruals, as shown here, we'll have to accrue a month of sales tax for education money, we'll have more utility taxes coming in somewhere around $145,000, and then other miscellaneous revenue, somewhere around $100,000, we're estimating, make up that $345,000 in revenue accruals. And then looking at expenditures, in total on a cash basis, expenditures were under budget by 1.6 million for the year, this chart shows the major cost centers of the operating budget and how much under budget each of those cost centers were, everyone except the education that's contractual. So looking at the 1.6 million in expenditure savings in the three broad spending categories, with salaries and benefits, operating and capital, first at the salaries and benefits, how they were under budget, just under $400,000 for the year, the largest savings were in fire streets, for council, and recreation, the city had salaries and benefit savings this year from staff turnover, since we budgeted for full staffing, so in some cases, promotion, positions were vacant longer than others, and we experience this every year, so, just to give you an idea, last year salary and benefit savings were about $280,000, the year before about $359,000, so we always have those savings, and I'll add, either way, the management discussion and analysis in the audit report when it's finalized, we'll go into greater detail in all of these areas. And then looking at the operating expenditures, we're under budget about 1.1 million, many accounts were under budget, the $2 lodging taxes collected for WADMAC were well under, that's simply because we budgeted 1.3 million, which was a little too high, so that kind of makes up a good chunk of that 1.1 million under budget number, so courthouse activities will still need to be accrued for three months, and then recreation, jail, police, and fire with most significant departments under budget with operating savings, generally these were savings and liability insurance, service contracts, electricity, travel, and especially fuel costs. And then looking at the capital spending, the capital, these are the smaller capital items that are under $20,000 that don't make its weight of the sales tax fund, they're accounted for in the general fund, total of about $103,000 in savings there, again, mostly from fire, recreation, landscaping, streets and buildings and facilities. Looking at year-end adjustments on the expenditure side, we'll need to accrue one month of jail costs, we have a month of $2 lodging taxes we need to submit to WADMAC, about $110,000, and then other operating costs, we're estimating about another $450,000 in total, so somewhere around $660,000 total expenditure accruals. And for operations after accruals, we're looking at about $34 million in total revenues compared to about $32.8 million in total expenditures, and that would put the estimated surplus for the year at the $1.2 million, and as a percentage of operating revenues, it's about 3.5%. And then looking at the sales tax fund, which is the city's capital projects fund, revenues will be about $4.8 million for the year, and on the expenditure side, we sort of spent $8.7 million at the end of June, and we'll likely add another $800,000 in accruals, that will mostly be for street repaving and Striker Center construction, so somewhere around $9.5 million in total expenditures for capital projects. And the larger projects for the year, underground wire, we finally got built from Virginia Power for that, so that was paid this year, we had sidewalk expenses, Striker Center, obviously, school capital projects and debt services, those are the major, the higher volume, dollar volume areas of spending for the capital fund. And then beginning fund balance for the year, we started the year at $37 million, and it was broken down by these four categories, so these are designated by governmental accounting standards board, we add in the total estimated revenues for the general fund operating fund and the capital projects, we would add $38.8 million in revenues, take away $42.3 in expenditures, the total estimated fund balance at June 30th that just ended would be somewhere in the vicinity of $33.5 million. And the total fund balance would be broken down, as shown here, top category, non-spendable, this represents the assessed values of the Toyota property and the two motels just recently purchased by the city, and then the restricted is the cash escrow balance of the Striker Center borrowing that we're still using to pay off construction, and then looking at the unassigned, we are, last few years we have assigned exactly 35% of unassigned, which is the 35% reserve policy, so we put the residual in the assigned, and that's mainly for future capital projects, so that would put the unreserved, the unassigned right at $11.9 million, and assigned fund balance at just under $18 million for the year.
Just a point, the assigned is, means it's in the capital improvement budget, but those aren't necessarily set in stone, that they might be extended or what have you, so there's flexibility there, that it's not restricted or.
Yes, it's really management's intention.
Thanks.
And then looking at the financial audit schedule, we'll be accruing revenue expenditures till the end of August, the auditors will come out the third week in September to do their major field work, we'll have draft statements provided to the finance and audit committee members in mid-November with a meeting with the auditors and staff the first week of December, and then we'll report everything back to city council at the December 10 council meeting.
Thanks, Phil, any questions, comments?
No, I think staff does a great job developing the budget every year, it's always terrific when the expenses are less than had been forecasted, it's even better when the revenues are greater than we were forecasted, and when you put the two together and we have that surplus, that's a good portion of how we fund our capital projects going forward, so it's not just that the city's not in the business of making money, we're in the business of running the city, and that takes continued investment in infrastructure, as we've talked about earlier with the street repaving, all the other projects that are going on, so these monies keep, whenever we run a surplus, that gets bundled back into a pot that we use to create a better overall living environment for the residents and for the guests who contribute so much to the fiscal health of the city, so Phil, thanks to you and your team for all your good work, and we look forward to even better results next year, if we can make that happen.
I have to thank all the department heads for keeping a good handle on the expenditure side, they all did a great job this year. Yep, good news.
Now, what's, many reassuring things, but I've been concerned over the last few years whether that gap between expenditures and revenues would start narrowing, and it hasn't over the last four years, we've been able to keep that sort of gap there, and that's reassuring, and I think, again, your point that department heads and everyone who deals with the budget has a role in making sure that happens, and that creates flexibility for the city in so many ways, and it's really important, so, thank you.
And maybe I will add, not at the expense of making investments in that infrastructure, just kind of reiterating that, I mean, I think we, you know, could we pave another street more often?
Maybe.
But I think, you know, we're on a, you know, the CIP is very well crafted, and I think, you know, with planning commission's involvement and, you know, through staff, you know, we're on a good pace to make sure that we meet the needs of the residents, and so, you know, we have that gap, but it's not, it's not by, you know, not spending money where we need to.
Thank you, Phil, appreciate that. Next is city attorney reports and legislative overview, I think there are a couple things that happened in the general assembly.
There are quite a few slides of things that happened in the general assembly, and so I'm going to, to give you my annual disclaimer that this is an overview, this is not intended to be an exhaustive discussion about everything that happened in the general assembly, nor is it intended to be an exhaustive discussion about individual bills, it's just to give council an idea of some of the things that happened in the general assembly that council will either be seeing again in the next few months, or that council may have an interest in, and so we'll get started. Last year council adopted an ordinance to amend the tax section of the city code to provide for the exemption for the surviving spouse of a member of the military killed in action, and as I recall, council discussed this and was concerned regarding the exemption because if your property exceeded the value of a single-family residential house, the average for the city, you were not entitled to the exemption, so the general assembly has gone back to fix that, and so now you are entitled to an exemption up to the value of the average single-family residential dwelling in the city regardless of what your dwelling is actually worth, so for example, if the average is $200,000 and your dwelling is worth $400,000, you get a tax exemption for the $200,000 and you pay tax on the remaining $200,000, so this is to correct what needed to be corrected from the original bill.
If I recall, one of our other expressed concerns was the real property tax exemption is fine, but where was the income tax exemption?
And they did not address that issue.
Okay, maybe we could just pass that along again.
House Bill 2173 authorizes localities to waive delinquent taxes on real property if the owner, in lieu of paying those taxes, donates the property to a nonprofit organization that builds, renovates, or revitalizes affordable housing for low-income families, so this is an opportunity to take advantage of a tax deduction and correct delinquent taxes and create affordable housing as well. Senate Bill 872 requires the tax assessor, when requested by taxpayer, to provide a written explanation for an increase in tax assessment of the taxpayer's property, so this must be in writing and provided to the property owner at the request of the taxpayer. Senate Bill 1448 provides that special taxes levied or a special assessment imposed pursuant to an agreement with a community development authority constitutes a lien on the real property subject to that special assessment, which is on parity with real property taxes, and those special assessments which are delinquents may be collected in the same manner as delinquent real property taxes, so a notice is sent after the tax is delinquent for two years, and then we file suit to collect those taxes if they're not paid. Real property constitutes a first lien on real property, but problematically, end of note, the statute doesn't actually identify the precedence between the CDA lien and the real property taxes, so that's an issue that still then has to be resolved. House Bill 1589 requires a locality to ensure that the reimbursements that it receives from the state for personal property tax relief is applied and attributed to the first $20,000 of value for an automobile that's leased to a member of the military or his or her spouse when the lease contract requires them to pay the tax. This isn't collecting additional taxes, it just dictates how the tax relief provided by the state is applied to the tax, to the tax tab. House Bill 28, not 2098 creates a new category of personal. House Bill 28, 2098 creates a new category of personal property, and I quoted it for you, miscellaneous and incidental tangible property, personal property employed in trader business that is not classified as machinery and tools, merchants' capital, or short-term rental property, and which has an original cost of less than $250,000. The example that I can think of, if someone buys an inexpensive cellphone that they use for their business, that doesn't fall into any other category. It may fall into this category, but we don't have any guidance about what that means yet. The bill does allow localities, permit a taxpayer to provide an aggregate estimate to the commissioner instead of an itemized list. If council wants to take advantage of that, we would need to adopt an ordinance to provide for that.
You meant $250,000?
$250,000.
Yes.
Senate Bill 1040 allows a business that intends to cease operations within one year, but finish settling their accounts in the subsequent year, to pay their license tax based on the estimate for the current year's gross receipts instead of the previous year's gross receipts. So if you're only going to be operating for six months during one year, your gross receipts are going to be less, and so this is to reduce the amount of the tax. Once the accounts are closed in the second year, then that amount needs to be submitted to the Commissioner of Revenue, and the amount of the tax is adjusted for actual gross receipts. If the taxpayer grossly underestimates the amount of the tax, or they fail to cease their operations as they indicated, then there's a penalty associated with that, and it's either 10% of the additional tax due if they underestimated their tax, or of their gross receipts for the year that they didn't cease operations. I'm going to talk a couple of slides through procurement. When we execute a contract pursuant to the Virginia Public Procurement Act, we can provide that we will allow modifications to that contract, and those are permitted as long as they don't exceed 25% of the value of the contract, or $50,000, whichever is greater. If they exceed that, it has to come back to the local governing body for approval. If it is under that threshold, it can be done administratively so long as the contract provides for that. So House Bill 1628 provides that when the modifications exceed the threshold that's permitted to be done administratively, they are not automatically void, but the local governing body actually has to void them. So they are voidable, but not void. So council would have to take an action. It also provides that it is not the basis for the party to the contract to file a cause of action against the city or the jurisdiction that's the other party to the contract. The bill also provides that contract modifications cannot contain provisions which limit the amount of recovery a party to the contract can recover from a public body as a result of a contract dispute. So this bill specifically deals with modifications under the Public Procurement Act.
Does this, does that, to your knowledge, is that something we...
Not typically, no. We're very careful about not exceeding the scope of the modifications. House Bill 1835 clarifies that the Virginia Uniform statewide building code requirements are not waived when we use small purchasing procedures for construction projects, so it would have to be a fairly small construction project. The bill also limits the use of job order construction contracts per year, and job order contracts for architectural and engineering services when there are multiple construction projects in the jurisdiction. So job order contracts is when you bid on a unit price for doing construction work, and then that unit price is applied to multiple projects in the jurisdiction. We very rarely ever use job order contracting, so this is not going to have a significant impact on the city, but it appears to be something that they want to look at, because they have, in the statute, also provided for further study of the issue, and that is to be reported back to them in October of 2017. Just for your information, the General Assembly decided that we are now allowed to have notification systems that we already have, and so they adopted Section 15.2925.1 of the Code of Virginia, which permits us to send notifications to residents by either means of email, phone, text message, or something similar. The ordinance that we are to adopt pursuant to this code section requires that we have an opt-in provision for non-emergency notifications, but there's also a lovely sentence at the end of the section that said, "Existing notification systems are deemed to meet the requirements of the statute." So when we go back to update our notification system, I would suggest that we adopt an ordinance at that time, but currently, our notification system meets the requirements of the code because it predates the statute. The General Assembly did a lot of work on daycare center and childcare facilities. Most of that is going to be done on a state level and involves licensing, background checks, and notifications to parents, but we're going to see it in the city code, because what they did reduces the number of children who may be cared for in a single-family home by right, from five to four. The zoning ordinance currently allows five, so that will need to be amended. It also allows administrative approval for day homes caring for children to serve between five and 12 children with administrative approval. That's optional, so council will have to make a decision about that. It also requires the Commissioner of Revenue to report to the Department of Social Services the names and addresses and contact information for any child daycare center which has a business license in the city of Williamsburg, and the Commissioner of Revenue has to report that twice a year. So the Commissioner of Revenue is going to have a little bit of work to do as a result of those changes in the code, but primarily, the change is as extensive as they are, really are on a state level and not on a local level. The General Assembly adopted two bills regarding tourism project GAAP financing. The first is House Bill 1756, which reduces the amount of financing that has to be in place from 80% to 70% before a tourism project can be eligible to receive the 1% share of local and state sales and use tax revenue to be used for GAAP financing. Senate Bill 1401 creates a new category called a project of regional significance, and that is a project that is at least $100 million in new construction or insignificant renovation. And tourism projects of regional significance are entitled to 1.5% of sales and use tax generated by the facility also to be used for GAAP financing. Now, there are a number of things that have to happen before that GAAP financing is available. First, the city would need to create a tourism zone, then the city would need to create a tourism plan, and then the city would need to authorize a specific tourism project. And all of that would then need to be approved by the Virginia Tourism Authority before that funding would be available, and the tourism project also has to be approved by the state comptroller. So if at some point council is interested in making this available, there are a plethora of steps that we need to go through before this is available, but it is in the state code, and it is a possibility, particularly if we have a big construction project now, the benefit and incentive is a little bit bigger for those projects.
Is the third paragraph, is that related to both of them, or just Senate Bill 1401?
Both of them.
What is the Virginia Tourism Authority? Is that the...
Commission.
Commission?
Yes, it's a corporation.
Okay. ETC, okay.
The General Assembly adopted regulations regarding mutual aid agreements between campus police and law enforcement. So now if there is a sexual assault which occurs on campus property or other property related to the institution, the Commonwealth's attorney needs to have notice of that within 48 hours, and mutual aid agreements between campus police and law enforcement need to recognize that. There was also a change in public safety. Now, first responders, including law enforcement officers, are permitted to carry naloxone and to administer it to persons who they believe are suffering from an opiate overdose. The statute provides immunity for local officials, emergency responders, for personal injury causes of action when the naloxone is administered in good faith by the first responder. So there would need to be some training associated with that before law enforcement would be able to do that, but that is a possibility now, and might be helpful to save some lives in the future. And so I've made, in sending the department heads, I've made the police department aware of that. Some changes in zoning as well. House Bill 1849 changes the standard under which a variance request is considered by the BZA from unnecessary or unreasonable hardship to unreasonably restricts the utilization of the property. I think it's fair to say that this is a lessening of the standard under which they consider variance requests, and we have gone from an unreasonable hardship approaching confiscation to unreasonable hardship to unreasonably restrict. So it's been a gradual loosening of that standard over the last several years. Variance requests apply to conditions involving the physical nature of the property, so the shape, the size, the area, height, or the location of the property. Variance requests are not to be used for changing the use of a property under zoning, and if a variance, if the en-sought through a variance can be reached by a rezoning or an SUP, then a variance request is not appropriate to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And as always with variances, the burden of proof is on the applicant to prove the unreasonable restriction, it's not on the zoning administrator or the zoning department to prove that. So it's just like it would be in any other case with the BZA acting as a quasi-judicial body.
So who, how do people, I'm thinking about people serving on the BZA, how do they, as just people trying to help their community, understand exactly what's meant when we're transitioning from unnecessary unreasonable hardship to unreasonably restricts the utilization of property? I mean, are there examples that they've crafted as part of this?
Presumably, BML will come up with something. There is training that for zoning administrators' members have to attend, and I am certain that they will address this issue. But these changes to the state code took effect on July the 1st, and so we don't have any guidance through case law regarding what that lessened standard is going to be. But it's clearly not as restrictive as unreasonable hardship is, and certainly not as restrictive as an unreasonable hardship approaching confiscation. So it gives them some flexibility to do what they have not, they have not been able to do under the Cochran case, which was the one that the Virginia Supreme Court decided several years ago that said, "There is almost no circumstance where variance is going to be appropriate because, unless there really is a taking of the property. If you can use the property, a variance is not appropriate." So this relaxes that standard a bit more, but they're still going to have to prove that the restriction is unreasonable, and that's not necessarily going to be the easiest standard to reach. The same bill also prohibits ex parte communications between the zoning staff and applicants and the Board of Zoning Appeals. So no longer is it appropriate for a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals to call up the zoning administrator and ask about a specific case. These are substantive communications regarding the issues in a case, not procedures, like we're having a meeting on Wednesday at 2:00, that these are matters pertaining to the case and the substance of those matters. The BZA and the zoning administrator can, and the applicant for that matter, can still discuss the substance of a case as part of a public hearing, and staff can still send their report as part of an agenda, along with all the attachments, but it also has to go to the applicant. The prohibition does not apply to the BZA and its legal counsel, just to the zoning staff, and I can't talk to the BZA because I don't represent the BZA regarding substantive issues and cases before them. And interestingly, they carved out an exception. The restriction does not apply to special exception applications. It only applies to determinations from the zoning administrator interpreting zoning ordinance and variance applications. So for some reason, they carved out special exceptions from this prohibition. So if it's a special exception application, they can talk to the zoning administrator about it. Senate Bill 1355 imposes a 60-day time limit for approval by any local planning commission of a plat or a site plan that involves solely commercial real estate. Now, 60 days is the standard for making a decision regarding a site plan or a plat. What this bill actually does is apply a process for multiple resubmissions of disapproved solely commercial plats. So the planning commission, when a site plan was resubmitted, gets to consider the site plan in its entirety for the second time. There was a restriction that applied to localities with populations over 90,000, which limits their consideration of subsequent submissions of the plats to the things that they found deficient in the plat the first time they considered it. And so now in resubmissions, they're only allowed to talk about the deficiencies. So if the commercial, the person submitting the commercial plat regrets those deficiencies, then they're allowed to talk about that, but they aren't allowed to talk about the things that they liked about the plat the first time around. So it's a little bit confusing. What this practically means is that when the planning commission deals with commercial plats, they need to be very explicit about the reasons for turning a plat down, and expressly articulate the deficiencies that they find, so they know what to talk about in subsequent Senate Bill 1257 removes the sunset provision regarding the payment of cash proffers. So several years ago, the General Assembly limited our ability to collect cash proffers to only between the completion of the final inspection and before the issuance of the CO, and they attached a sunset provision, so that would go away, and they've extended that sunset several times, and now they've just gotten rid of the sunset. So we've been doing that when, on the rare occasions that we have cash proffers, all along, and we will continue to do what we have been doing for the last several years, but it's not going to go away now. It also removes the sunset provision for the cap on administrative fees, which can be applied to performance bonds for the completion of public improvements, which is by statute capped at 10%, and so that cap is going to remain. I'm going to talk a little bit about health insurance and employment. House Bill 1940 requires healthcare plans to cover the diagnosis and treatment of autism spectrum disorder for children from ages two to 10. The previous statute said between ages two and six. This applies to plans with more than 100 employees, so it's going to affect the city's health insurance coverage. It is effective January 1st, 2016. Employers under state law now are prohibited from requiring a current or prospective employee to disclose the username and password of an employee to his or her social media account. So what that means is, we can't require an employee that we're either thinking about hiring, or as a condition of continued employment, to give us his password and username for his Facebook account. It also prohibits employers from requiring the employee, from adding an employee, a supervisor or administrator of the employer, from a list of contacts associated with the social media account. So to translate that, we can't require an employee to friend an employee, a supervisor or administrator, as a condition of continued employment or as a condition of employment.
I'm not sure if this law bothers me more, the fact that people might have actually been doing that.
To my knowledge, we have never done that.
Okay.
And now we won't. Senate Bill 1133, this was already law, so all it does is codify existing case law. Public employers are not permitted to retaliate against their employees for expressing their views on matters of general public concern. So if someone in the planning department wants to go to the school board and talk during the open forum about an issue that's before the school board, the city cannot discipline an employee for doing that. Employees don't lose their First Amendment rights when they walk through the door. Now, the city can discipline an employee for discussing matters that are of private concern to the employer, so personnel policies, things that are truly of private matter to the city as an employer, an employee can be disciplined for discussing those. This, and interestingly, they also carved out an exception in this law for constitutional officers. So if a constitutional officer wants to say something, and they're, the Commonwealth happens in Commonwealth attorney's office all the time, where an assistant will campaign for the opponent of an incumbent Commonwealth attorney, and then they lose their job as a result of that, that's why that exception is carved out. Again, this is not new law, this codifies existing case law, this is what we've already been doing. VRS is now by statute responsible to administer the Line of Duty Act trust fund. VRS determines the amount of the city's contribution. We are a participating employer. A couple of years ago, the city opted to participate in the VRS version of this plan, so we're a participating employer. The Department of Human Resources Management is obligated now to perform the duties of participating employers pertaining to the administration of health coverage, so there's a question about making sure that whatever health insurance plan is comparable, and that's the Department of Resources Management's responsibility to do now. And the department will be compensated out of the state fund. The funds pay all the benefits associated with the statute and as provided by the statute, and VRS will make eligibility determinations under the statute. We are still responsible to provide VRS with a list of covered employees every three years, and this is also an issue that is on the table per the statute for further study by the state. There was one eminent domain bill I wanted to bring to your attention. Senate Bill 1435 clarifies the rules regarding lost profits. So it specifically requires that lost profits are set forth in any award for just compensation in a takings case, and that any enhancement to the property because of public improvements are offset against any award for damages to the residue and that claim for lost profits. It also limits the amount of lost profits that can be sought, so in a partial takings case, the claimant can seek lost profits for three years. case, the claimant can seek lost profits for three years. In a total takings case, they can only seek lost profits for one year. Okay, so now the granddaddy of them all, which is the Conflict of Interest Act, which I think has gotten the most press, and what I'm going to do is go through the changes in the, the House Bill 2070, which amends the existing law. This is not the only time that council is going to hear about QUOIA from the city attorney's office. I will follow up with this. I just want to talk about the amendments, and I have a lot of slides about amendments. So just to give you advanced warning. So the General Assembly removed the distinction between tangible and intangible gifts. So now any gift of whatever variety, intangible or intangible, is considered a gift. It prohibits the receipt of a single gift with a value in excess of $100, that was $250, or a combination of any gifts within a calendar year with a combined value exceeding $100, from any person who the recipient knows or has reason to know as lobbyist, the principal of a lobbyist, or a person, organization, or business that's seeking to be a party to a contract with locality. And gifts that have a value of less than $20 don't have to be aggregated. So if someone takes you out for a hamburger several times a year, you don't have to aggregate those up to the $100 limit.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
So if you, if you're invited to a dinner, and the cost of the dinner is more than $100, you can't...
We're going to get some...
Okay, okay, thank you. Sorry.
Guests with a value of over $50 have to be disclosed on this disclosure form. Food and beverages or entertainment or the cost of admission with a value in excess of $100 at a widely attended event can be accepted, so this is in excess of $100, but it has to be reported on the disclosure form. And this is how the General Assembly has defined widely attended event. It's an event at which at least 25 persons have been invited to attend, or there's a reasonable expectation that at least 25 persons will be invited, will attend. And the event is open to individuals who share common interests, who are members of a public civic charitable or professional organization, who are from a particular industry or profession, or who represent persons, represents persons interested in a particular issue. So this only applies to gifts over $100. Anything under $100 is a gift that is, you can accept absent this exception, and, but it still has to be disclosed if it's over $50. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
So as rarely as this happens, I just wanted to mention that if the city received gifts, if you receive a gift on behalf of the city from a foreign dignitary, you can accept that, but there are conditions that need to be met, and I have not listed those in the slide, but please, if you're planning on accepting a gift from a foreign dignitary, please talk to me first. Gifts in excess of $100 may be received from a relative or personal friend, and to determine whether or not someone is in fact a personal friend, the circumstances of the gift, the relationship history between the two individuals, so how long have you known each other, has this person given you Christmas gifts in the past before, and whether or not the person receiving, the person giving the gift claims it as a deduction on their tax return is considered in determining whether the gift is from a personal friend. So it's a bit convoluted. There are some exceptions for travel. So there was some discussion toward the end of the session regarding travel paid for by the locality, and I'm happy to report that that did in fact stain the bill. So travel paid for by the locality for its officers or employees who are engaged in their official duties is not considered a gift. So this is, the city pays for council members to go to the VML conference. That's part of your official duties. You're only doing it because you're city council members. The city is paying for it. It is not a gift. Travel paid for by your personal employers is not considered a gift if it's in relation to your employment duties. Travel paid for by third parties that exceeds over $100 in value, so you go to the VML conference, but VML pays for it, can be accepted by the donee, but it has to be approved in advance by the Virginia Conflict of Interest and Ethics Advisory Council, and it has to be listed on your disclosure form. The council, the advisory council is required to make a determination on requests for approval within five business days of their receipt of the request. They're supposed to be setting up a website to facilitate this with all the forms necessary for those submissions to be made. Approval is based on the purpose of the travel as it pertains to the official duties of the requester, but per statute, things like travel for conferences involving public officials to discuss public policy issues, or education of the official pertaining to his or her public duties, i.e. VML conferences, or in which the official has been asked to speak on matters pertaining to their duties as an official for the locality, are considered legitimate bases for travel expenses paid for by third parties that should be approved by the council. The Conflict of Interest Act now contains what is essentially a no, no harm, no foul rule. So if you inadvertently accept a gift that's over $100, somebody sends you tickets to an event, and the tickets are worth more than $100, and you don't open the envelope, and so you didn't know you got it, if you, the gift is not used, it doesn't count. If you receive a gift and you didn't realize the value is over $100, you have the ability to return the gift to the donee, or the equivalent monetary value of the gift to the donee, or to, to donate that to a charitable organization, all within a reasonable time when you learn that the value of the gift exceeds $100, and you can't claim that gift, or a donation of that gift to a charitable organization on your tax return. And if you meet all those requirements, then if you inadvertently violate QUOIA, there's a no harm, no foul rule, and you won't be prosecuted for that. So QUOIA defines immediate family now as the spouse or any other person who resides in the same household as the officer or employee and who is dependent on the officer or employee. Previously, it was just a child. So if you can make a case that there's someone living in your household who is dependent on you, or if there is someone who lives in your household who is dependent on you, the same gift prohibition applies to that person that applies to the public official.
So just a question about that. So parents are not immediate family?
If they are dependent upon you and they live in your household.
So going back to the, I know, are you going to say anything more about travel?
No.
So is there the exemption on the gift of travel if it's that pre-established relationship?
Gifts from relatives are not, are not gifts under QUOIA. They're exempt under QUOIA.
Okay, okay.
All right, so disclosure forms are filed with the clerk of council, and they have to be retained by the city for five years. They don't go to the state, they stay in the clerk's office. Filing dates are still June the 15th for a reporting period from November 1st to April 30th, and December 15th for a reporting period as May the 1st through October 31st. None of that changes. Willful and knowing violations of required disclosures. So for example, the failure to disclose a gift as required by the statute is subject to a civil penalty of $500 or two times the amount of the gift, whichever is greater, and the gift has to be returned to the person who gave it to you. The Commonwealth's attorney is responsible to enforce the civil penalties provision. A person who fails to fire, file their disclosure form by the date that they're required to do so in the statute could be subject to a civil penalty of up to $250. Again, the Commonwealth's attorney's office is responsible to enforce the civil penalty, but please be aware that the statute requires the clerk of council to notify the Commonwealth's attorney within 30 days if the disclosure form is not received. This is a mandated obligation on the clerk of council, so there's a limited amount of time to, to correct that error. One other change to QUOIA that I want to talk about. Under previous law, council could seek an advisory opinion from the Commonwealth's attorney regarding Conflict of Interest Act questions. So here's the circumstances of a particular case, do I have a conflict of interest or not? And the Commonwealth's attorney could issue a written opinion, and then the council member who asked the question could reasonably rely on that, and as long as they took actions in good faith with that opinion, then they couldn't be prosecuted for violations of QUOIA. That is still the case, but now they have extended the ability to issue those opinions to city, county, and town attorneys. So you don't have to go to the Commonwealth's attorneys anymore. You can call the city attorney, or if you are in a county, you can call the county attorney and get those opinions. Those opinions have to be in writing, and they are not protected by attorney-client privilege. So they are subject to public release upon request.
Whether you go to the Commonwealth attorney or the city attorney.
And all of these amendments take effect on January 1st, 2016. So we have a few months before they take effect, and so you will be hearing more about how these amendments work into existing Conflict of Interest Act requirements. It was enough to talk about the amendments today, I think, but, but you'll be getting additional information from our office regarding this.
And who said the General Assembly didn't get anything done? They've been working hard.
Want to talk about one?
They don't want us to get anything done.
Want to talk about one court case? And Mr. Pons and several other people sent me this court case, and so I did want to mention it. Council last month adopted rules regarding hotel regulations, and council will be seeing those again next month. The U.S. Supreme Court determined that hotels are not closely regulated industries, which provides an exception to Fourth Amendment search and seizure rights. And so what council is going to see is a change in the code that makes a inspection process for hotel guest registries look much like any other search. So you ask for consent, consent is not obtained, then you go to the magistrate to get a warrant. So it's going to look a lot like fire code inspections. And it's going to, it's going to be moved to a different section of the code, so there's no criminal penalties associated with not giving consent. So those are the two things that you're going to see next month, but this is a 5/4 decision to determine that those hotel guest registries are subject to the same obligations as any other search, and not falling into the closely regulated industry exception. So just wanted to make council aware that there is an additional issue that you are going to see next month that didn't have anything to do with the General Assembly. So you see several tax amendments to the city code, and you're going to see some zoning amendments to the city code. And I will try to answer any questions that you have after slipping from the firehouse.
Any questions? There's a lot of information I think we need to...
Did want to make...
The General Assembly was busy.
Did want to make council aware that all the bills that pertain to localities generally are compiled in a legislative update. There's an electronic version that goes out to staff. There's also a paper version, which is about that thick in my office, but council members are welcome at any time to come and look at that, or I can email the full legislative update to you. Just let me know.
Drop off for that.
Yes. Any questions?
Thank you for taking care of that.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. A lot of, a lot of information, and thank you for being there for us.
One thing, I just feel compelled to say. I can't remember the last gift I got from a foreign dignitary. I'm still waiting on that. And I understand there's some value in making sure that people aren't improperly rewarded for whatever, for influence by gifts. But this type of action is not going to eliminate or reduce corruption, if that's the intent. It creates more bureaucracy. It creates more, it does shine a brighter light on, on what people receive. But if somebody really wants to be corrupt, they're just not going to follow the rules. That's the definition of it. So I don't know that some of these things really make more sense when they don't really get at the heart of what some of the problems are. I don't pretend to have the answers, but, you know, some of these regulations just seem absurd. It just boils down to, just don't accept anything. It's just easy. And that's fine.
Buy your own tickets.
That's fine. But I just, it concerns me that people think that's really going to make a difference, because people are either going to do the right thing, or they're going to do the wrong thing. And it's not a, a porting mechanism that's going to make people do the right things.
This is just an example of action and reaction. We'll see where it goes.
But you really appreciate though, that part where they, they gave a definition of what a widely attended event is. That type, I mean, I know it sounds a little silly, but that is so helpful in understanding what is meant by...
Not...
And so many things don't do that.
Not everything in QUOIA is abundantly clear, and so we look for guidance wherever we can get it, which is why I, I found it extremely helpful for the General Assembly to leave in the explicit language that made travel. We contacted our legislative delegation regarding leaving that language, and that locality-sponsored travel for its officials is not a gift, because it isn't a gift. It's what you are obligated to do because you're members of city council, or the city manager, or the assistant city manager are obligated to do as a part of your duties. It's not a gift. It's something that you need to do as part of your duties. And so they did some helpful things with QUOIA, and, and that's the, the number one example that I have of that. But there are still gray areas that we have to figure out, and the more guidance that we get, the better off we are with how do we define those issues.
So one, I do have one question. And it's part silly, but part not. If someone were to give you a thing of value, let's say it's $19 in value, and they gave you 1,000 of them.
The, the language simply says, gives 20, gifts of less than $20 do not have to be aggregated. It doesn't, doesn't say at what point they do.
Just give it a smelling...
The language is one sentence long.
Thank you, Chris. We appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm sure, I can't imagine how much...
I will be seeking as much guidance on filling out the disclosures and complying with QUOIA as I can find between now and when the provisions go into effect, and I will pass that along to council.
Thanks, Chris. Anything else on that? Next order of business, unfinished business, I believe we have none. New business, we all received a letter today from the EDA regarding downtown parking. Given, given the hour, I think what, what I will do is with City Manager Miller, draft a response to that when it, by council for consideration. And in that, I'll update the EDA on, on the conversations that have been taking place with Colonial Williamsburg and, and the need for conversations with merchants in the area before we move forward, but we've certainly talked about the idea of doing a downtown parking study, but we've been reluctant to go forward with it until we have both Colonial Williamsburg on board, because they control most of the downtown parking, and, and the merchants need to be part of this discussion as soon. So if it's okay with you, we will come back in the next few days with a response.
So there were a couple of points in the letter from the EDA. One was that, that to encourage the planning commission to, or ask council to direct the planning commission to look into the parking issue and appoint a group that would help guide the conversation. Then there's the issue about the study, and then there's the question of, is there money that's about to be spent by the city on the parking garage infrastructure that we might think should wait until a decision is made, or, I mean, where are we on the parking garage infrastructure expenses?
I have a call into the police department. They had an incident they had to take care of today, but, but the police department is handling that issue, and I'm going to the public to find out where they are in the process. I know at one point they were going to work to reach out to merchants down in the First Stores Street area to get feedback and guidance on things they thought were important as we move forward, and buy new software, new equipment, and all those kind of things. Nothing's been purchased to date.
So that won't happen until we have this conversation?
So I've kind of called it to them to find out where they are in the process. That money was approved in the current, your CIP, so it just was approved in the...
Yeah, it's in the CIP, but no, no decisions have been made and no action.
And we may decide that we should just go forward as planned, but I would like the opportunity to have this broader conversation before we commit ourselves to something that takes us down a certain path from which we cannot retreat.
And, and the question is, what's the right group to have that discussion? Is it, is it city staff with, council, city staff with Colonial Williamsburg? So I think those are things that we need to consider as we move forward. And what I think I'll, I'll do with City Manager Miller is come back to you with some options to, to think about how, how we might move forward with that.
And the conversation with Colonial Williamsburg is about whether or not they're, what is the, I mean, should we involve other merchants in the area, or is it too early for that?
Well, I, I think ultimately it needs to be a conversation, first with Colonial Williamsburg, because they control big chunks of parking in downtown. It's their property, sort of what are they willing and not willing to, to do with that in terms of, of parking. Second, it's with both Merchant Square Association and other merchants in that whole area, because I think we're really talking about the whole area from the triangle to, to the bookstore, from, from city square to, to, what is it, Lot 5 or whatever.
Lot 5, yeah, sure.
Yeah, so I think though, this, you have to look at that whole area. So, so I think there are lots of constituencies...
I would consider down to the delis.
Yeah, right.
And Mr. Try, just extend that a little bit.
Tribe Square and the deli. So, so I think, I think there are lots of constituencies to be involved in, in that conversation. So, so I think, I think there are lots of constituencies to be involved in that conversation, but I think the initial conversation needs to be with Colonial Williamsburg, because they control so much of the parking in the immediate downtown area, and if they're not willing to engage or think about doing things differently, spending money on a study doesn't necessarily make a whole lot of sense.
I understand that, and I think that even if the foundation is not willing to engage in that conversation, that shouldn't stop the city from having its own conversation about how do we best...
That's right.
...utilize and allocate the parking resources that we have, that we control, for the best economic interest of the community.
I mean, the hope is to, to get a mega solution to downtown. If that's not possible, then I think the fallback is how do we best allocate those, those assets that we control? But I think we need to start with sort of the mega level and see if there is, if there are opportunities there for providing better service to everyone.
Makes sense.
And maybe new parking resources, you know? How do we expand the parking in the area if that's something that we need to do?
And, and, you know, I don't ever have a problem finding a parking space, but I believe there's a perception in the community that the downtown area is difficult to park in. And so part of it is also, how do we communicate to people how they can find parking that is available? And, again, I don't have the answers, but we need to consider that as part of the parking solution, because it does us no good to have ample parking if people don't understand that it's there.
And we're not the first community to face these issues. Okay, so I will get back to council with information on that. That brings us to our final agenda item for today, which is...
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Don't, don't we have an appointment?
Oh, yes, we do. Sorry. Thank you. I wasn't on nothing. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that effective July 1st, 2015, city council appoint Joyce Jarrett Alwens to the Thomas Nelson Community College Board for a term to expire June 30, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion. A second, would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Mr. Knutson, aye.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Farland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye. Thank you, beauty. I forgot to note that on my agenda, so thank you for that. Now that brings us to a final agenda item for today. Open forum, I have one speaker's card, Gary Shelley. Gary, welcome.
I am Gary Shelley, live at 205 Indian Springs Road. Last month I recorded that city manager Jack Tull and I had agreed to meet to discuss matters that were of concern to me and other citizens. You heard Mr. Tull declare in January that our concerns could be addressed by what he called "the simple administrative remedy of meeting with him," and that he would be happy to discuss any matter. Such was not the case, and our meeting was a disaster. He allowed nothing of substance to be discussed, and he refused to address our concerns. He told me I have a big mouth. Mr. Tull's behavior was totally unacceptable, unprofessional, and irresponsible. He destroyed his own credibility, and so be it. It's time to put the past behind us and move on, but not until someone addresses our concerns. All of you heard Ms. Carrie Flanagan speak here a year ago about multiple intrusions by city personnel onto her property, and how unsettling it was to find strange men outside her window taking photos. But only two of our present council members were in attendance in June of 2008, when Ms. Flanagan spoke of another matter, recounting a particularly troubling event that happened to her and her housemates, and which proved to be eerily relevant to events that took place in subsequent years. She felt compelled to speak because she wanted to respond to a newspaper article and set the record straight. I have a copy of you that I just sent around, of a presentation, and some of it I'll read right now. I quote, "I spent my childhood bouncing from place to place overseas while my parents represented our country in the foreign service. So when I moved off campus after my freshman year, it was my hope to become a part of a welcoming community. However, my interaction with many of the city's officials has led me to feel ambivalent at times about my place of residence, and in other times persecuted, a situation I failed to find myself in even when I lived in Serbia immediately after we bombed it. I would like to outline to you one specific incident that stands out. Last spring I noticed several strange men in my backyard less than two feet from my bedroom window, and I came outside to find a city official directing them and removing my possessions from our property. My housemates were similarly disturbed and emerged to join me in inquiring about the apparent theft and trespassing. We decided to take action by sitting on our yard furniture. It was only after threatening to call the police that our possessions were returned, and we were allowed to get back to our lives. Several months later, I witnessed a city representative, that would be Ms. Shelton, told a circuit court judge the charges were being dropped because the so-called debris had been removed. However, every single item was still in our backyard. We just wanted to be left in peace. The same questions and concerns we had then still stand. How exactly do perfectly serviceable lawn furniture, outdoor cushions guarding tools and supplies, and outdoor blow-up children's pool, and bamboo tiki torches qualify as debris? How is a household comprised solely of females under the age of 25 supposed to feel safe and secure in our home when people are taking pictures of our bedroom windows and entering our yard without notice? What is there to ensure that I won't be put through a similar ordeal in the future for an equally empty claim? And by the way, that's exactly what happened to her. I, and many other students, have done our best to become a part of this community and to make it better. I would appreciate it if the city would respond by treating us with respect, even in balance application of the laws, and assurance that neither I nor any other student will wake up to potentially realized fears for our safety and privacy from unidentified, uninvited men tracing through our gardens." And that's the end of what I put from her. I witnessed that event, and every detail of Ms. Flanagan's account is accurate. I also received photos from the city, taken in September of 2007, which clearly showed no debris of any kind on that property. But sadly, the city couldn't just let this at fair rest. Some months afterward, Ms. Shelton fictionalized an account of the event, and someone in the city delivered her untruthful account to the Virginia Gazette, which published it on their front page. These actions by the city were malicious and intent, and attempts to find out who was responsible have failed, as no one in the city would address it. This has created ill will, anger, and resentment, and it lingers to this day. This is a culture that has been established. If we are to move forward, we must endeavor to establish an open and honest government where city officials are held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Anyone else wish to address city council?
Ron Kirkland, Williamsburg Hotel Motel Association, Mayor Holman, members of council. QUYA doesn't take effect until January, so feel free to enjoy the Italian eyes.
Just don't give me $5,003.
I'll stick to one. I wanted to thank you for approving our request to put a gate, or to put a map, pull-out map in Gil Williamsburg Magazine. I think you're going to be pretty happy with it, and Councilwoman Knutson, I can tell you, we're going to work hard to make sure that it's a quality piece that you're happy with, and everybody's happy with it. So thank you, and look forward to getting that together for you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland. Anyone else wish to address city council on any matter? If not, I think that brings us to an end unless...
No, nothing, nothing. Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Jerry.
Aye.
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 Mr. Mayor.